Everyone, welcome to the January 17th, 2023 Board of Education Special Meeting. Call to order of this meeting with us this evening is Mrs. Kelly, Mr. Peterson, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Jacobson, Mrs. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, and Mrs. Rattelli, and of course, our Superintendent, Mr. Testani. If you could all join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Okay, first up this evening, we have the Quarterly Financial Report, Mrs. Laborius.
I am pleased to present you the results of the second quarterly report. The attached documents include a summary by major classification of projected and unencumbered balances, then a detailed summary by major classifications, and then following additional detailed financials. We've also included the grant summary as well. Overall, we propose to initiate transfers from balances in personnel and transportation. So as we've been speaking to you about, we do have balances in personnel services and transportation as a result of challenges with staffing. And we are proposing to make transfers to cover critical needs in maintenance as part of our IT five-year refresh, in legal services, and to initiate training and material purchases necessary for our literacy program. This enabled us to lower our budget request for the fiscal year 2023-24 for these critical items. The current fiscal year began with a full budgeted headcount and projected need for busing for all students based on historical trends. However, we experienced personnel vacancies and associated fringe benefit savings and a driver shortage that resulted in lower number of bus runs, as we've been talking about. That trend has continued. In personnel services, following the trend summary in the document, you'll see that we had hoped we were able to fill all the vacancies at rates as we had in the past. As we began the year, the attrition in vacancies continued to be greater than anticipated. The Q2 vacancies are slightly higher than projected in Q1. The gap increased in substitutes as we were able to fill at a higher rate and we needed to utilize substitutes to cover critical teacher functions. We are also seeing, like the industry, a lot more people that are out on FMLA higher than we've seen in past many, many years, or extended times for family medical leave and leaves of absence. And so we've had to fill those in different rates than we had in the past. We anticipate the need to continue to monitor this closely and plan to report monthly vacancies and associated staffing costs to the board. Health insurance follows the trend for personnel. As we see larger-than-anticipated vacancies and longer projected time to hire, we see balances in health insurance as well. Pupil personnel. In pupil personnel, you'll see that we are actually in the black in that category. If you compared the pupil personnel services Q1 to Q2, it looks like a pretty big swing, and that, as we explained last time, was partly because the board authorized a transfer of funds from the paraeducator line in the budget, where at that time, we had been experiencing about 40 vacancies in that line. We were able to get some good contracted services for behavioral technicians to meet that need, and the board authorized that transfer. So you see now, rather than being in the red, we're in the black, because in Q1, we were reflecting that expense, but not the budget transfer yet. In addition, the budget's accounting for the change from 73% to 70% reimbursement per the state legislation. And there's also showing in that line, the way that we categorize it, a surplus in transportation because we haven't been able to get as many buses as we would like to run optimally. In the school expenses, you can see we typically plan to spend that full balance. And in support expense, we're showing a negative balance because here, as I mentioned earlier, we've incorporated the projected expense for need for the literacy initiative. So we're going to be proposing transfers at the end of January to the board. That would include an amount of $450,000 to cover some of the needs for literacy to get started on that initiative. And so the final column is showing you the proposed transfers to meet that need. Without that, we would be flush within that budget. Maintenance, operation, and transportation, $4 million is budgeted in this category for utilities. That's the bulk of the budget. And electric and heating rates were budgeted at contractual rates for the entire fiscal year. The remaining accounts are anticipated to spend the full budgeted amount, except for the balance in plumbing and heating supplies and transportation. The maintenance service accounts reflect proposed transfers to cover critical projects, including HVAC. We mentioned the Tomlinson-Chiller project earlier, that we were budgeting $313,000 for, which we did shift to the ARPESR grant. We have estimates now, it's come in much higher than that. So we're asking for a portion of the surplus in the personnel to be utilized to cover the Tomlinson-Chiller project, as well as HVAC maintenance, an overage on the scoreboard from what we budgeted, and tree trimming and irrigation repairs, security upgrades for window coverings, asbestos abatement of a staff facility, radon remediation, and technical consulting. The largest part of the capital budget is for tech equipment. Almost 70% of that budget has been expended. There's an additional $200,000 for school and department equipment replacement, where we wait until spring typically to do that unless it's an emergency. And then we are proposing transfers of $1 million for Chromebook server and interactive board replacements per the five-year waterfall equipment refresh cycle. So as we planned out the budget, and what we'll talk about today as we get into the budget discussions, we have a five-year equipment refresh for all of our capital equipment for technology. And we reduced our budget request by about $1 million, hoping that we could afford some of that with this year's surplus with the -- because of the fact that we are short on staffing and have that surplus in the staffing area. I will pause there and see if there are any questions.
Mrs. Kelly?
Hi, thanks for this. Just so I can make sure we're all on the same page, there's no exact number showing on the summary what our surplus is, because we are reallocating those funds.
Correct.
So what is the total amount that we have reallocated that would back into what the current surplus is? Do I net out the 2.6 million from Q1 and the 241 that we're showing now in Q2?
Yes, it's about 2.5.
To get about 2.2 million?
Well, I believe it's 2.5.
Okay, so that's even more then. So we probably were projecting a bigger surplus than we were in Q1, and we were reallocating those funds.
Correct.
Okay, so we did have a surplus of 2.5, just to be clear, $2.5 million, mostly from transportation and from staffing.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And I know, and this could be for later, not for now, but I know we are making adjustments to the transportation, and I'm not 100% comfortable or sure yet of the attrition calculations for this year, but I know we're trying to get those more in line.
Correct.
Okay. I will have more questions later, but I just wanted to make sure I was reading this right because it's, I understand by reallocating it, but I don't see it anywhere here how much it was.
Correct, yeah.
So I just wanted to point out that number for now. Thank you.
Yes.
Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
I'm not sure I should ask the question, but just when you talk about the support expenses for legal and exceeding the budget due to Title IX requirements, is this involving litigation experiences, or is this that there's just something to Title IX that's coming with some responsibilities that we aren't covering in-house?
Yes, there are Title IX responsibilities that are new, that we did have to rely on outside legal advice for. In general, we're also up in legal services across the board because we did lose in-house staff for that function. So it's partially the Title IX, which would have happened otherwise anyway, and then it's partially because we don't have that in-house staff any longer.
Mr. Asa?
Yeah, mine's more of a comment than a question, but I just wanted to say I appreciate to you and Mr. Testani bringing these things to us now at this stage in the game. I do like the idea of being able to reduce your ask for next year with money, especially if we know we're going to have it. And I really would prefer this method now of hashing this out than trying to jam expenses in at the end of the year, because, one, it never looks good, and, two, we're jamming up purchasing and trying to get POs, and we're always under the gun and trying to figure this out. So, you know, obviously, I need to look closer at this before we vote on anything, but I just wanted to make that comment, so thank you.
Thank you. That was a big priority for Mr. Testani coming in, is to be able to be transparent and early in that process, so.
Mrs. Kelly?
I definitely appreciate what Mr. Asa's saying, because it does feel very rushed at the end of the season, at the end of the budget season, to be spending kind of, I don't want to say recklessly, we're spending it on good things, but it's just frantic. But at the same time, I just feel like, a couple times, you know, we talk in budget season about, oh, let's, you know, wouldn't it be lovely if we had a nonlapsing account, or if we had things to cover these things? And I feel like, here we are staring at one. It was unintentional, even though I feel like I did make my concerns, and shame on me for unanimously being part of the unanimous approval of the budget, but, you know, I did push back on those attrition numbers, and I feel like we were being extra conservative. And I feel like we will start losing credibility if we keep baking in all of this. It was unintentional, I understand that, but I don't think our assumptions were as good as they should have been. So it's lovely that we have this money to spend now, but I just, and I appreciate the method that we're, how we're spending it, and we're doing it timely, but I just think that we will start losing, if not already have lost credibility, if we continue to have these surpluses.
And I just want to say, if I might, that's why I appreciated the fact that we had that detailed attrition history document that we go over in the Finance Committee, because I do think that part of, the big part of the conversation at the board table has been that it really has been unprecedented, if you look at the trend of the last two years, three years, so two and a half years. And so we did attempt to adjust for that. At the same time, we do, as Mr. Testani has said, have to recognize, you know, the need to look at recruitment differently, compensation differently, other pieces maybe differently so that we can attract and retain the staff that we need to. And that's part of the equation as well. So we welcome that conversation as we go into the budget season.
Mrs. Gerber?
And I'm not sure if this is the right time for this, but since it did come up in the quarterly report, I don't know if this would be through the chair to Mr. Testani, but under the support expenses, when we're talking about the right-to-read legislation and the $335,000 for components of the program, is there any more specific info, like what are those components? Just, I mean, have we chosen a curriculum? I'm still, I feel like I'm not totally sure of where we are with that. And I know, I thank you for giving us that memo with the change in the timeline, I just wanted to get a little more clarity.
Yeah, we have not chosen as of yet. We have some visits scheduled in the next week and a half to districts to get some more information, see it in action, gather some feedback from teachers, from building administrators, their experience, so that we can bring that back to the table and have further discussion. Once that is completed and we settle on a program, then we will allocate resources to at least begin the process to start incorporating the curriculum writing that will go along with it in March to begin. So that process will kick off in about a month and a half to two months.
So I guess it's to follow up. So do we have any sense, I mean, we aren't sure exactly which curriculum we're going with yet, like are the prices somewhat similar, so these numbers would apply regardless of where we end up?
Correct. Everyone seems to be in the same ballpark. There are some variance, but not significant enough at this time, especially when you add in the professional development component as well, and the support that goes along with the purchase. So, I mean, some of them are a little bit higher than others, but we are no way allocating too much money at this time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. District Improvement Plan update, Mr. Testani and our executive leadership.
Before we get started, I just want to thank everyone here at the table and all the program directors for working extremely diligently and hard to put this together for tonight's presentation. This is the first of hopefully many presentations on our progress in meeting the goals and objectives of the District Improvement Plan, which was passed in the spring. I also want to say that our goal is to continually revisit, update for cycles of consistent and constant improvement as we try to focus our efforts to grow and cultivate student learning and also staff professional development. As you're all aware, the District Improvement Plan is grounded in six focus areas: academics, SEL and equity, professional development, growth, student support, and community. As presented last week in the budget presentation, we are working diligently to coordinate our spending efforts to support our goals and objectives through the District Improvement Plan. So at that point, I will turn it over to our first presentation, which will be Mr. Mancuso and SEL and Equity Progress Update.
Good evening, everybody. Rob Mancuso, Executive Director of Special Education. I will give you a brief update and answer any questions you may have regarding the SEL and equity work that has begun. So presently, we've identified SEL, like lead for the district, and teachers in each of the buildings to support the SEL and equity work that is going to be done, or that is taking place across the district. We have an SEL District Steering Committee that's establishing defined outcomes, evaluating effectiveness of programs that are currently being implemented in schools, and establishing a common vocabulary around SEL practices throughout the district. And we're investigating more robust channels of communication for parents regarding the work of SEL in the district and how they can support, you know, our students and their children at home. We continue to utilize the DESA as our universal screening, the DESA Mini. We've administered that once already this year. That helps identify students in need of explicit support in SEL and informing school-based support teams and interventions. Additionally, we're discussing about providing adult SEL support and professional development to faculty accompanied by resources so that they can build their capacity to support students, and providing, we're focusing on providing staff PD on self and social awareness, which are competencies that are, you know, part of the CASL framework that we're focusing on. We're looking at targeted supports for underserved students or students in need, and establishing more equitable grading practices at the secondary level, and developing programs that focus on relationship building. We're starting with building relationships and those connections between staff and students so we can strengthen the work of SEL in our schools. We're looking at course enrollment, and then, of course, we're looking at attendance. Mr. Testani has developed a district-wide attendance team to discuss trends, share best practices, and identify new strategies and resources to really, you know, look at the areas of need, the students that we really need to target, and the families we need to support in improving chronic absenteeism. And then, again, participation in workshops on multi-tiered approaches to improving attendance in schools through engagement partnerships and early intervention. So a lot of good work is taking place at the district level regarding SEL, and we will continue to provide updates to the board accordingly. Any questions?
Justine LaSala, Program Director for Secondary Science and STEAM. I'm going to start this slide, and then I'm going to pass it on to my colleagues. I wanted to talk to you today about work we're doing in the district around standards-based and culturally responsive curriculum. In the Fairfield Public Schools, all departments and courses utilize the Understanding by Design Framework, which provides a planning process and structure to guide the development of curriculum. Using Understanding by Design principles, staff identify essential skills and knowledge to be learned at the end of instruction, develop assessments that focus on learning transfer, and then design the curriculum backward from those ends. Also called backward design, this approach to curriculum development ensures a focus on student learning in relation to standards-based learning goals. And to provide a concrete example, this year, in the Science Department, when developing our new environmental chemistry course, we use the Understanding by Design Framework.
Good evening. Janine Goss, Director of Elementary Education and Pre-K through 12 Literacy. I'm going to follow with the culturally responsive rubric development, just to let you know that this rubric is currently being developed to support our work with curricula, and we're going to be able to use this rubric as a lens. As we write new curricula, we're going to be using that, especially when we work on our ELA curriculum, and we're going to examine our current curricula to ensure that we're capitalizing on students' differences, making sure that their cultural identities and experiences are celebrated, and use them as teaching tools to increase engagement and continue to set high expectations for all. Now, in terms of the program and resource adoption, you all know that, you know, in June of 2021, Connecticut joined approximately 30 other states that have passed legislation requiring the State Department of Education to oversee the reading response. And that includes adopting new resources as, you know, programs, as well as assessment requirements. And so as we know, at the end of September 2022, the state did release the approved programs. And so I just want to let you know that to date, we've reviewed six of the seven. We intend to review the seventh tomorrow. And then we continue to dig deeper in our top choices. We're reviewing videos, we're going to see them in districts, we're also talking with districts about their implementation. And then we're going to have the pre-K and elementary principals, language arts coaches, who are doing that step of digging deeper, share what they learn with our program reviewers and our ELA Steering Committee, so that the entire group can make a recommendation on or around February 6th. That is going to be the date that we have earmarked for that. We should have all the information we need by then, and then we'll make that recommendation to the District Curriculum Committee and then the Board for Approval. Once that's done, we want to begin our unit writing on or around March 20th.
Good evening. Jen Senna Swangler, Director of Secondary Literacy and Learning. Pleasure to be with you. Currently, Mr. Wakeman and myself and the teachers of Gifted and Talented are in the process of conducting a program review on our gifted programming here in Fairfield. Included in this review is site visits to neighboring districts that have excelled in this work and are showing short-term and long-term results for students on their programming. And we've already had one visit with Norwalk Public Schools and talked about the ways in which they are supporting kids through their very tiered approach to extending and enriching the curriculum. Next week, the team is getting together to meet and discuss further the evaluative tools we'll be using for our in-house review, to measure our own success, and to also identify further target areas of need in which we would like to strengthen the program for our students. We are including in that the identification process, also our programming model and how we are delivering instruction, whether kids are radiating that success across their day beyond just the current pull-out model, and also what we will be using for our curriculum. Thank you.
Good evening. Lisa Olivera, Program Director, Social Studies. In the fall of 2022, an inventory of completion was conducted for all K through 12 courses using the Common Implementation Guide template that we created. Implementation Guides, of course, consist of course and unit descriptions, essential questions, enduring understandings, standards, duration, and materials. They also include unit learning goals, what students should know and be able to do at the end of each unit, learning plans, the activities day-to-day, as well as assessments. Program directors and the curriculum coordinaries across the district and across all disciplines will continue working on completing Implementation Guides this year and throughout 2023 and 2024. Thank you.
Can you just flip the slide?
So starting on that second piece there, James Evedjancik, Chief Academic Officer. Starting on that second bullet there, Evaluation and Feedback Systems. Over the past year and a half, our district has put together a large stakeholder group of teachers and administrators to begin revising and rewriting what the rubric looks like for teacher evaluation into separate domains. This involved reforming our PDAC, which is the Professional Development Evaluation Committee, who essentially stares this process and needs permission and votes in terms of the final product, along, of course, with you guys, the Board of Education. With that being said, going back to the first, we're currently in the calibration cycle for that evaluation to make sure it's working and fitting our needs, and as well as making changes to it before we bring it forward for formal presentation. With that being said, all of our curriculum is now gathering student work and using a looking at student work protocol that is standards-based, as part of the professional development with data teams and professional learning committees, communities, excuse me, either at the grade level at the elementary school or the content area level at the secondary schools. As you know, we're excited to continue our partnership in professional learning with Dr. Gillis and Literacy How. That is taking place at our elementary schools with our administrators and early literacy teachers, specifically the kindergarten teachers this year. And we've also begun a partnership with the Partners for Educational Leadership, who's working with our full administrative team, our coaches, pre-K through 12, and that includes literacy and mathematics.
Good evening. Kanika Ingram, Executive Director of Human Resources. I will talk about how we're going to diversify and hire qualified staff. And so in the Human Resources Department, we've been working hard, and we're trying to reimagine what HR does. So we're looking at it in terms of talent management instead of HR. So we're looking to increase our education diversity in terms of ensuring that we have a solid plan. So our RESC, which is CES in the State Department of Education, they have a coaching series that starts this month, it runs January through March, and there are 14 district leaders that will be going to this series. And they will help us flush out what our plan is going to look like moving forward so we can make sure that we're hiring the best of the best. We've been working hard with Rachel Chappa to ensure that we have a creative marketing campaign for non-certified and certified staff. So I think the last time I spoke with you all, I talked about how we purchased a billboard ad, and that will go up on January 23rd. It's a digital billboard with eight different images, so we will advertise that we're hiring for teachers, paraeducators, substitutes, and so forth. We are also looking to establish our Recruitment and Retention Committee, and the goal is that the leaders that go to this coaching series will be part of that established Recruitment and Retention Committee. Here, they will help us develop and flush out, again, a robust committee, excuse me, a robust plan on how we're going to make sure that we recruit from this day moving forward. We are also working with area colleges and universities, such as Sacred Heart University. They have a new program where they're allowing their juniors and seniors who are in the elementary education program to also become cross-endorsed for a sped. So we are taking all 10 of those students, and they will be interns for the next year. What is great that we What is great, that we will literally have them for an entire year. So, the goal is to court them, and hopefully, they will then come on to be Fairfield Public School employees. So, again, I, any questions you have about what we're doing and how we're doing it, I will answer them. Thank you.
Good evening. Jen Swingler again. As we have been working on our SRBI processes, one of the next levels of work necessary to move the work forward for Fairfield Public Schools is to consider further the work beyond the three major components within SRBI and consider how we are supporting students through a multi-tiered support service model. As we've discussed with you in the past, three major components of the SRBI include our systems of instruction, assessment, and decision-making, how we are supporting students academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally, as they travel through their journey as a Fairfield Public School student. As Mr. Mancusi indicated earlier, the system is currently looking at processes in which we are supporting students through SEL. And through the work with Ms. Goss and myself around the literacy work, we are starting to inventory further the work of Tier Two and Tier Three intervention, and how students are supported at the elementary, middle school, and high school levels within their literacy continuum work. As we continue to identify what is working well, we will also start to continue to bridge further how we are looking at the needs of the whole student, not just academics in isolation, but also behavioral needs and the social-emotional components necessary for students to thrive across their school day. So, in addition to the work done of the literacy review, we've, and as I said, we started to inventory our current trainings and resources we have in place, we are also looking to explore the intention of the purpose of intervention at both the Tier Two and Tier Three level, to assure that students are receiving intervention that is most targeted to their direct level of need. We continue to work to bridge this work with the elementary and middle school. Thank you again to the board for the support of the middle school SRBI coordinators. They've done an incredible job of bridging that work to core instruction and supporting the work of Tier One, both in, not only in ELA and in math, but also in science and social studies. So, we are seeing that small targeted group work spread across all content areas, so students are supported beyond just their intervention, but also included in their entire core Tier One experience. We look, again, to support further the bridge between social, emotional, behavioral, and academic supports, and moving the system from a SRBI model in isolation to that multi-tiered MTSS model. This is a long-term project. It's something that's going to involve not only the programming and the support we give to kids, but also the mindset and how we go about doing the work across their school day. So, again, we feel kids are supported from the minute they walk in till the minute they walk out and get everything they need, so they can thrive in all academic areas. Thank you.
Along with a comprehensive MTSS or SRBI model comes comprehensive assessment. One of the things we've looked at this year is to make sure that our assessment calendar, which is quite large at this point at certain levels, has fewer assessments that are, again, more comprehensive, that provide us accessible information and coherent data at this point. That includes, right now, the state's interim assessment blocks. Essentially, those are short and brief, smarter, balanced-like assessments in ELA and math that are standards-based. They are grade-level based, so you know when you're given a third-grade ELA assessment, it is at a third-grade reading level with the content and skills integrated there. And those are being integrated across, again, math and ELA, three through eight, so that our data teams and our SRBI system can begin looking at those data at the grade level there and provide flexible student growth, as it says. We, my first bullet there, inclusion of Decision Ed in 2324, as you saw in the budget presentation and we'll see in the future, is a system that will allow us to get pretty immediate and effective data on a student over time. And, again, that is accessible and gives us the information we want at our fingertips while the meetings are going on, while those MTSS meetings are going on. Lastly, we are in the phase of selection and integration of a pre-K three specifically screener, but one that may extend pre-K eight. At this point, the legislation is, is for K three in light of the dyslexia. Once that one is chosen, that may extend beyond, depending on the company or the vendor that we choose, but we will have to look at how that extends through our pre-K eight and what the connection is among them. Right now, as you know, we use the STAR assessment, and that may be shifting based on that decision soon. Now, turn it over to Dr. Parrish.
Good evening. Zakiya Parrish, Deputy Superintendent. This past summer, our, our schools engaged in a school improvement planning process in order to ensure that the goals that they were setting were not only aligned across the level, but also aligned with the district improvement plan, to make sure that there was a focus on student achievement, attendance, and also access, student access to various courses at the high school level. Reviews of these school improvement plans will take place at the bin year point with principals and their evaluator, the person that, that works directly with that particular school, reviewing not only where they are in terms of progress towards the goals that they set, but also discussion of the strategies that they've implemented to date, as well as any adjustments that they have, along with their teams, identified that there's a need to make. And so, again, focusing on that strategic alignment, not just between the, the district and the building level, but on down to the administrator goals themselves, which are aligned with the school improvement plans, as well as the teacher evaluation goals. So, there's that through line that is continuous on all levels. Within the school improvement plans, there have been professional development sessions that have been identified at the building level, based on the needs of the students and the staff within their individual buildings, again, as a strategy in support of those SIP goals that they have set. So, the buildings have had the autonomy to, to determine what those professional development needs are, in conjunction with the things that are being done across the district, at a district level, within a specific level of the school, so certain things at elementary, middle, and high. And then, finally, within the community bucket, we have our District Director of Communications that's been hard at work in her time that she's been here. She has relaunched our district newsletters, which go out to both staff and families, and those things contain a variety of information, not only just some of the accomplishments that have happened across the district, but the things that are happening that most people might not know about, both within the school community and beyond, as well as to, you know, some of the things that we want to present, such as board event updates, district highlights, or PSAs from our superintendent around chronic absenteeism. She also has created an Awareness Month calendar that she shared with the board in, in terms of being able to provide recognition, focus areas for the board at the board meetings, to, again, engage various community groups within Fairfield. There are regular updates to our social media and website, including the, I should say, rebirth of the redistricting facilities utilization page to make it more community-friendly, so that they have easy access and up-to-date access to the different pieces of that large puzzle that is being constructed as we speak. In addition to that, there are also several surveys that parents are encouraged to participate in, so that we can collect input, not just for them, but also, also feedback from students. So, for example, the food service survey that's now being publicized, and we're asking for input from, from both of those stakeholder groups. And then, finally, just coming up, she's in the process of working to develop this strategic communication plan, to really provide a framework for how information is disseminated from all levels throughout the district, so that we can ensure that staff, students, and families have the most up-to-date and current information available, and that it's easy to read based on the audience that is actually utilizing that information, so making sure we're, we're not using too much education jargon in some of the things that we're publicizing, so that it's, it's user-friendly. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you, everybody, for the presentation. I'll open it up to the board for any questions.
I just wanted to highlight one, one specific area. We really wanted to showcase the actions that are being taken across the district that are aligned with the goals and objectives of the district improvement plan. There's a lot of hard work being done by staff across the district to impact growth and improvement in, in student, in our students at all grade levels. So, I think that was the, the main goal of tonight's presentation, is to really highlight the actions that are aligned to the plan, that are being executed, and how we will continue to monitor, adjust, and, and cycles of improvement, so that we can always use the improvement science processes that we will be working with the Partners for Educational Leadership to help drive growth in teaching and learning across Fairfield Public Schools.
Mrs. Kelly.
Hi. Thank you for this. I just had a quick question. I think this one might be for Rob. But I know, one of the budget questions that we asked, and the answer was kind of a, to be continued, so it might be premature, but I did ask about the win period in the middle school, if that's coming back and all that stuff, and I didn't know if, when you're talking about SEL, if that period is strictly for academic supports, or if there's been any talk about SEL supports during that period.
That's okay. So, yes, absolutely. Part of the work that the team that's working on it now, and again, that team is comprised of middle school administrators and teachers, working to actually flush out what exactly will include, be included in the win period. And that will be not only the academic interventions, but also SEL work, not just for those that might be identified through a screener like DESA, but SEL skills for all students, regardless of what their individual needs are.
Mr. Isa.
This is kind of a goofy question, but where's the billboard going to go?
No, that's a surprise. It's going to be on 95, going south, right in front of Housatonic Community College.
Okay. And it starts on January 25th? I'm sorry. 23rd, okay. I'll be doing, we'll keep my eyes out and going slow.
Mrs. Guernsey.
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. I just have a question about the gifted program, because I was trying to understand the timeline and to better understand if the changes that might occur here would impact the budget, or is this an extended timeline? The, the work that you're doing now, how does that progress through the end of the year and into next year?
I think it's an extended timeline to make sure that we put together a comprehensive program that fits the needs of the district. We're not looking to go too quickly. We really want to look at best practices and see how we can better serve our students.
Thank you. Mrs. Maxon-Kinelli.
Thank you. First, I was hoping some, and this is a little embarrassing, but on the one through twelve, the key performance indicators, I don't actually understand what I'm reading. So, that, for example, if you look at number two, you know, the English language arts performance is measured by SBA, proficiency will close the gap and raise the bar. And then, it says 72 to 73. What does that mean?
So, the 72 and the 73 are the first column and the second, regardless of the number on this first page, is the percent of students proficient at this point. We gave the overall scores, because the individual indicators are within the district improvement plan tabs. You can see the five different subcategories and see if they are closing the gap as well as raising. So, that's essentially the, the raising the bar piece. Remember 2020 and 2021, and then this past year were touchstones, because the plan was just being implemented of, or essentially baselines, to get to the point we wanted to in 2027. So, you don't see every individual group there, but that is in the, is on the internet on the plan.
Okay. So, to get more information, we need to look there.
Yeah, we didn't, and, and we can provide this information if necessary, because it's there. We didn't want to overcrowd the slide with every indicator for everyone.
I, I got it. You know, maybe it would have helped if you'd highlighted the part that these numbers represented, only because, obviously, it doesn't say anything about subgroup, and that's where I was unclear. So, thank you for that. I, we can check the website ourselves, myself. On the, I've, I've a question on most pages. On the SEL page, a few things. On the fourth bullet point, the investigating more robust channels of communication, I thought that was something we had already, or there, we'd already decided what it is that you're recommending that we're using. So, so that was the parent?
Parent square.
Okay. So, that is set.
That is set in conjunction with what Rachel's doing from the communications end, with newsletters, highlighting in the newsletters, you know, a specific page, the SEL. So, we're looking at really a robust communications effort around SEL to better support families, as, as Rob said, not only providing the tools to the students, but also providing the tools to the families, so that they can help support their children at home.
And how are we finding out what they want help with?
We're using a lot of the data that we're getting from the DESMENI initially. That's, you know, that's the rating from the teachers to see the competency areas that students need the greatest amount of support in, and then we're sharing that with the parents, and we're providing them some kind of resources or strategies to strengthen those competency areas that we're working on in school.
And are they getting the context that this is what our students are identifying as an area of weakness? And the point I'm trying to make here is that not all parents are going to see that in their child, and not that we're trying, we're, obviously, we're not calling out individuals, but just understand that the district is recognizing this as a need. If you don't, in your own child, you still might want to give it a go.
That's correct. And we've also have, we have a link on the district website for mental health SEL information for parents.
Okay.
We've also, we've also talked with Rachel about putting out some parent surveys later on in the year to gather some data. That was something that, in the communication and this, as was discussed, the example was the, the food services, but trying to really gather some more input from families on various topics.
Okay, thank you. And I love the idea of getting the parent survey. We might want to have as the final question in June, did we send too many surveys? But, and, but that said, I still like the surveys. I mean, I think it's invaluable input. So, regarding the explicit SEL instruction, especially to faculty and to staff, how are we evaluating that effectiveness?
Initially, it's based on, you know, teacher feedback, you know, for example, of doing some, you know, we have the mind-up mindfulness curriculum that we've been trained all schools, all elementary schools in, and we've gotten a lot of positive feedback anecdotally from, from staff and from principals. The same with, we're doing some DBT in the classroom training with our, our health teachers at the high school level. We're getting positive feedback from them, but this is in the early stages of how we're collecting data in a more systematic way to measure students' growth. And, again, those, those competency areas measured on the CASL framework.
Okay. For the establishing more equitable grading practices, I was hoping someone could tell me about that, since the policy committee is very much in the midst of tackling that. So, I'm, just would like some more information on what's being done independent of that policy work.
I think that was inclusive of the policy work.
Okay. That, just figured I'd get the heads up on that now. And finally, for the, the district attendance team on, on this slide, to discuss trends and share best practices and identify new strategies. You know, I like the idea that we are obviously making a priority of this. I completely respect that. I'm curious what we haven't done. If, I don't know if there is an example of something that this specific process is bringing into Fairfield that we haven't previously done.
So, this past week, last week when we met, we discussed how our messaging to families, we've gotten a lot of feedback from families when they receive correspondence from the schools. That's been very not welcoming and not supportive in nature. So, we did look at some examples of what they call nudge letters, so that families do not feel as if they're receiving these letters that are basically scolding them for their child's attendance, but really encouraging letters, letters that explain why we're sending the, you know, the you know, the notification, and also ways that we are offering our support in, in situations where families may need our support. And rather than, it was just an illness, or a vacation, or an extended vacation, but really with students that are having a hard time coming to school.
Follow up to that attendance question, and maybe Dr. Parrish can answer this. Development of the district attendance team, is that separate from the district level, building level, and subgroup level that we already have in policy? Is that separate?
Yeah, so the schools still have their individual teams. This is more of an opportunity for the school teams to have a place to share across buildings.
Okay.
So yes, this doesn't.
Those are still already in place?
Correct.
Is this in addition to that?
In addition to.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. On the academic slide, hopefully three quick questions. The one thing I was wondering about the culturally responsive rubric development, not as a voting item, but does it, I'm just kind of putting out there, I don't know, to Mrs. Jacobson, not that we don't have packed agendas. Is that something that would be worth, or at least even in a Friday packet for the board to see? Only because if that's going to be affecting the creation of the curriculum that we're voting on, maybe it might not be a bad idea for us to see it. And if we have questions to ask, because otherwise, we're going to hit it when we're already in it. Thank you. So that, I guess that's not so much a question, but just to Mrs. Jacobson, that may be something to consider, or Mr. Testani also. Secondly, regarding the gifted program, it's one thing to look at the, the programs that are in other districts, which I appreciate, but don't we need to take a step back and figure out what our goal is of the gifted program? Because I'm not hearing discussion of that. I mean, there could be a real significant reimagining of this, which again, is a discussion. I know the last time, and Mrs. Gerber probably remembers this better than I do, but the last time there was a significant revamping of this program, they had a whole parent committee, I believe, that was involved in this process. And so if we're setting a goal for something, and yet, board hasn't discussed it, and the community hasn't discussed it, what's the plan with this?
So I don't think we disagree that we need a goal. We don't know, we don't know at this point, and we wanted to get out there and see what was happening to, you know, we sort of get stuck in our own way of doing things, which we've done for a while with the gifted program, or with programs. So having a start to see what other districts have done, and then looking at some of the best practices was where we were going to go with it before we start engaging other stakeholders in what's necessary for implementation in our program.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Glad to hear. And then the, the final question I had was regarding, on this page, for the implementation guides, I guess I'm unclear on what's being changed.
So there's two parts of what I'll call the curriculum. There's the curriculum that gets approved at this level here, which includes the standards and enduring understandings and content and skills and so forth. And then there's the, what I'll say are the day-to-day or week-to-week stuff that we agree are assured experiences for all of our classes, that gets put in, in a implementation guide, that also gets revised more regularly. So if we say we're going to teach the Civil War, for example, what can we assure that every teacher who teaches that class and that unit will implement? And we don't want to have it so rigid that, you know, it says day one, you're going to do this, and day two, you're going to do that. But what are the assured experiences and backwards design to say all students will get this experience in order to be able to master and show mastery towards the common assessment, which also lives in the implementation guide, that you guys also don't see and the community doesn't see? And then teachers can obviously have conversations after that point to say, you know, what did your students do? How did they respond? How did they do on this assessment and so forth? And then revise and plan further with those implementation guides. So those are more of a fluid document than the actual published curriculum that, you know, parents and community members see.
And is it ever possible that in doing that inventory, you're seeing changes that need to be made to the curriculum, which would have to come to our attention?
If there are changes to the curriculum, we'd bring them to your attention. What generally happens with the implementation guides is it's more pedagogy and instructional techniques, or activities perhaps that teachers are doing that they find accessible to students, or responsive to students' needs. Generally, it doesn't change the curriculum, but we would bring it to your attention if we found that there were obviously changes to a board document that needed voting on.
Thank you. On the student support slide, the K3 legislation, so, and I apologize that I'm not familiar with that. So it's third grade where it's mandated that we screen?
So we.
Go ahead. Good, no, because then my question is, is that, and I'm not familiar, this is not my area, wouldn't there be a value to doing it a year earlier? Or is that something that can't be identified? That's what I'm unfamiliar with.
And a year earlier, meaning pre-K?
Well, earlier than grade three.
So it is a K, it is a K3 screener. The state, the state gives us a choice of, I think there's six on there, and don't quote me on that, that have met the satisfactory level of a screener that can screen for dyslexia essentially. STAR, or any dynamic assessment, does not meet the cup at this point. It's a tier-two assessment. I put pre-K eight on there because some of those screeners do go up beyond third grade, and it makes sense to keep it for fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh, so that there's continuity in terms of achievement. And others end earlier with certain things. But, you know, you wouldn't want to keep testing something that's a skill beyond where they need to be tested on. That's a kindergarten skill, for example. So it's K3 legislation. As we make the decision, it would, it might go up further than that, depending on which vendor and what they actually do.
I'll just add a little bit to that. What is on the approved list assesses all six areas of reading, at particular grade levels where it's appropriate. So phonological and phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary comprehension, and the sixth is the rapid automatic naming, or letter naming fluency. So they give you a grid, and they tell you at which grade levels those are, those are supposed to be tested at. And so that's what the screeners cover in, in K through three.
Thank you. So I, I apologize. When you were presenting, I misheard that as grade three. So my fault, sorry. On the growth slide, the first bullet point, the reference of access to honors and AP courses. I'm questioning the phrasing of access to, because I don't, with our discussion, that's not what we consider to be the issue. It's preparation for, awareness of. And so I'm just asking, what was meant by access to?
Well, the access to is inclusive of that. I think of access to being if they don't have the preparation for, then they don't have the access. So it's not just about it being available. It's them being actually prepared and ready to, to be able to take those courses. But also understanding that, and seeing themselves as an honors student, and understanding what it means to be in that honors or that AP class, and what would be expected of them, which may be very different than what they may have previously thought they were capable of.
Thank you for that, Rita, because otherwise, it initially reads as there's an obstacle, and that makes it sound like it's a district-created obstacle. So thank you for adding that. And that's it for me. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Gerber.
Just one thing quickly, disregarding the communication. Not all of us have kids in the system anymore. So if we could make sure that Board of Ed members get all of the communications that go out to parents, that would be great. I mean, just, I'd love to see the newsletters and things like that, just to see what everyone else is reading about. So, thanks.
Couple. The, super excited to hear about the Recruitment and Retention Committee. We'll get a little bit more into this in the budget. I asked a question on recruiting efforts, so I'm super happy to hear some of the ideas and things that are happening. Going forward, I think it's great that we've established a pipeline with Sacred Heart for Elementary and Sped. I'm just wondering if either tonight or as we get into the budget, if we can get a little bit more information around other schools, Fairfield U, or even other programs at some of the undergraduate and graduate programs that are right here in our own town in terms of setting up that pipeline and internship opportunities, making that super viewable on our, you know, HR pages, things like that. Just because, you know, we are facing such an issue, and we have such, I feel like in our town, we have two universities, and also surrounding communities, and just looking at how we can set up a really attractive recruiting effort for that, in that area. So just something that I'm really interested in. Also, for the screener, I'm happy to hear that you're going to be looking at the assessment calendar, and really focusing and making sure we're not overtesting kids. So, because right now, I've heard the Sback interrums, the STAR, then the new screener, and looking to see if one of those might go away without causing any harm to what our teachers need in order to inform their instruction, obviously. The screener, totally appreciate going above grade three if it, if it is prudent for us, only because then it helps us track where they were in kindergarten, first grade, and then up, and what, if what we were doing in the younger years actually has been fruitful. So I know the longitudinal piece, I think, is, is a good idea. The ones that are approved by the state, I know they can't be computer adaptive anymore, which is why things like STAR came off. But yet, the state assessment is computer adaptive. Right?
That is accurate. It is adaptive within the grade level, though. So a third grader will only get a third grade question. They could never get a fourth or a fifth.
Within the bands, you know?
Within the third grade band, yes.
Within the bands. Okay. All right. So just attention on that. But do you think when we get the presentation on the ELA in February, I think we're supposed to see something on that? Is this screener going to be aligning with whatever you choose? Is there a coordination? Like, you're waiting to pick that because you're waiting to hear that? Okay, I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads.
I just wanted to highlight the reason why we stress the partnership with Sacred Heart University, because they have reached out to us to really collaborate on this new program that they have. So we are more than happy, and I know Kanika's working very hard to make connections at all the local colleges and universities in the area. I think it's just important to know that there are some that are more willing to collaborate than others.
Totally understand. And maybe there's other programs that they have too, that we could be utilizing besides the Elementary and Sped. So they have a lot of programs there, music, or whatever it may be. So just, thank you. Else? Mrs. Vitale?
Thank you for the presentation. I may send you guys some follow-up questions. I'm aware of the time. But is there anything that you feel is missing, especially since the schools have done their school improvement plans? Any changes since the last, you know, the six months, we approved this back in June, at a time the board was very cognizant of, we were getting a new superintendent, and that new information may be coming to light? Is there something that needs to be added, taken away?
I think that's all under review right now. There has been some preliminary discussions about just really, and, and again, why we stress tonight, what are adult actions that are going to produce outcomes for kids? And I think that's one of the things that we really wanted to look at more closely, that we are putting more meat into the adult actions, and not just, for example, in the academic area, update curriculums and review curriculums, but what are we going to do that we, that are going to produce outcomes for student growth and achievement?
Thank you. And for Mr. Manquosi, just in terms of some of the SEL, and I believe parent programming was included in one of these plans. But I know that you ran some great programs through the pandemic, and I just was wondering if anything was on the agenda for the spring. I think it would be very helpful. I know I attended a DBT presentation a couple of years back, and parents were, you know, excited to hear and open just to learning how, what we're doing in the classroom, and how they could potentially use some of those strategies at home.
We are talking about doing another shorter parent series, similar to what we did when, you know, during the closure. I will tell you, our, our school psychologists and school social workers, under the direction of our teacher leader of school psychology and social workers, have done several short PDs on trauma-informed care with Allison Roy, who is a consulting psychologist from New Hampshire, as many of you know, because she's done many parent workshops for us in the past. And she's also been responsive to the needs of our high schools when we've lost some students. She's been here for us. So we continue our work with, with her, and we do continue to talk about how we can better support our parents in terms of additional, you know, training series.
Thank you. And just one last request, not, you know, when you get to it, I'd be curious to see what type of professional development is happening at the school level. I appreciate that each school might have its own needs and focus, but especially around some of the, well, academics and some of the equity work. Just be interesting to see the approach that each school has taken. And thank you for the update.
Okay. Well, thank you all very much. And just, of course, as things come up, we'll, we'll be happy to discuss them. But just per our plan, this should come back to us again for a review in May to see where we are the end of the year. So thank you, everyone. Okay. Discussion of the Superintendent's 2023-2024 Budget Request. So we'll go through each of these sections. As board members have questions, it would just be helpful for everyone if you could either reference the Budget Book page, or the question associated with the questions and answers. And just before we start, for people at home, have these been posted already on the website? Sorry. Is this already up, or no?
No.
No, not yet. Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. So first up is the enhancements in historical data, pages one through four. Go ahead.
So just to be clear, if questions were submitted and answered in here, there's no need to bring them up here unless we need additional information, correct? Okay. So for the public, a lack of questions from some board members may have been answered in a document that you will see.
Yes, we have a very lengthy set of questions that were submitted by board members, and questions that we received today. So those will be available for the public and for other town bodies shortly. But for now, we'll go through page one, two, three, four. Okay, Mrs. Kelly?
Hi, thanks. I had asked a question about the, the ASL teacher, and got the confirmation that it is for the, the ASL 2, which is great. And this could be for something later if I wanted to make an amendment or need be to. I really think we are underestimating the amount of students who want to come in. And this, because I need to preface this, this could be completely self-serving, because I have an incoming freshman who is dying to take ASL, and will be devastated if there's not enough room. So I, full disclosure that this is self-serving, okay? But I don't think she's alone. I think everybody at this table was overwhelmingly in favor of this class and what it does for our students who are not necessarily wired for traditional foreign languages. And I would really like to hear some feedback on, and I don't have the original presentation in front of me as far as the original number of requested versus enrolled, and how much of that was scheduling issues versus just not enough room. And I really, I just would like to get a little more color on, on that, because I, I think, I think that I would like to see more people be able to enroll in that class.
I could most certainly get you last year's requested versus what's in there.
For asking again, I just, in the sea of papers that we have, I don't.
It's, I definitely, I definitely have it. The other thing I would say about that is where would the students be coming from? As freshmen, I assume you're talking about? You know, would they not be enrolling in a traditional foreign or rural language at that point? And would there be a reduction or an offset as a result of that? But the ASL 2.1.0 is definitely for the students moving forward within the budget.
Mrs. Vitale?
I'm sure people are still going to have a lot of questions about the right-to-read legislation and the work that you're doing. So I don't want to go too far down that road, because I know that we're going to be getting an update. But I did listen to a webinar a couple of weeks ago. In terms of districts that are applying for the waiver, there was a comment made that that process might help the state identify new programs that potentially are not on the original list, which gave me major pause, considering the amount of work that we are doing. And just wondering if you've come across other programs that you like, of the programs that we might be using or piloting in the district, that are maybe on the back burner, because I appreciate. Because I appreciate, you know, you're looking at the list provided.
Interesting. A seventh program was added more recently, and that's why we're not reviewing it until tomorrow, because we had to get that set up. Apparently, though, that was a clerical error. So they had already met expectations, and were supposed to have been put on it, but none of us knew that. So it's okay, you know, we're still in the process, and we're reviewing them. There are some programs that we're currently using, such as Hegarty, which we very much value, but it's not a comprehensive program. And so the programs that are on the list are those that are comprehensive, that address all areas of reading, and that's why they make it to the list if they meet expectations. So it's not that we're going to throw out things like Hegarty. We're going to reallocate some of those resources, either in tiered intervention or in differentiated core instruction where needed. So that's our plan so far. Other than that, no, we haven't really looked at other programs that we think we might like. We've been inundated with the seven.
Understandable.
Yeah.
Mrs. Max and Kenley?
Thank you. I assume for all of the answers that say C-link, there's a hyperlink online? Okay. This is a question that came up a few times, and the answers never quite covered it. And that is this shift from the EPFs to the assistant principals. So again, just to be clear, that that reference of 12 months to 10 and a half is, the teachers are paid 12 months, but that's not a 12-month position. The EPFs were not a 12-month position. So it's a 10 and a half to a 10 and a half. But what hasn't been captured is what is lost. I understand, first and foremost, that they can now evaluate instructional leadership, which there's nothing stopping that now, except that maybe they weren't trained sufficiently. But the only thing that legally they can't do is evaluate staff. Is that correct? I'm not saying that's not insignificant, by the way. I think our principals must have their hands full doing that.
They're also guided by the teacher's contract. So contractually, they, again, they can't supervise and evaluate other teachers. They are also on a teacher's schedule in terms of the time they report, technically the time they can go home. So anything beyond that, they would be doing out of the kindness of their heart, and that's not necessarily true for an administrator where there is no start or end time to their day. We also believe, and I strongly believe, it also, in conversations with leadership of the FEA, provides a way for us to grow our own administrative team. Right now, there's really no entry into administration at the elementary level. We've lost, from what I was told, two really good EPFs in the last year to go out of district to take assistant principal positions elsewhere because we are not preparing them for the principalship. If we want to, especially in this competitive job market, be able to grow our own and keep our own talent here in the district, that is the entry-level position for leadership. And once then they become seasoned as the assistant principal, they'll be able to fill any principal vacancies that are left through retirements or resignations. So we're hopeful that this is, and the feedback we've gotten from the FEA, even though they're losing some members, they think it's a valuable tool to incentivize people to come into the district because they see a pathway.
Thank you, and I agree with all of that. I guess my question about the what is lost, obviously, the EPFs are very busy during the day. So if that position is now picking up all of these things, then what were the EPFs doing that now won't be done?
I don't see there's anything that won't be done. I think there'll be just more added responsibilities that can be done.
All right, so that's just, they're working longer days, and now they're getting paid for it?
Correct.
Vast oversimplification, I, but, okay. But the point being that nothing is lost, because I know Mr. Asa, I think, asked something about that. I think Mrs. Jacobson did, so I.
We don't anticipate any losses, just gains.
Basically, what are we getting for the additional funds? Like, what's the addition?
Right. This is a very, very minor question, but when did ELL become MLL? Because I've never seen that before.
We say, I'd say within the past year, it's really shifted over in terms of the state documents in ours to be multilingual learners officially from the state.
Even though the emphasis of the program is learning English?
The change is so that it's not seen as from a deficit perspective, that someone that is multilingual and able to speak multiple languages are celebrated as opposed to looking at it as something from a negative perspective.
And learning English is viewed as a negative?
Not the learning of English, but the fact that their, that English is not their native language is sometimes looked as, looked at as a negative. And so it's to try to change the perspective. And again, it's not here within Fairfield. This is across the state and the country that this term has shifted.
Someone got paid a lot of money to make that decision. Yeah, sorry. Little cynical, I just, because an awful lot that needs to be done for students all over across the board, and I, never mind. The, I'm still unclear, and Mrs. Gerber asked this question, I asked this question, I think a third person did, regarding the, what we're expecting out of this substitute management contract. I understand that when a, sometimes when a teacher has gone out and we have not been able to fill the position, that we, a teacher becomes a 1.2. So that's one area where I know our teachers cover. And so my two questions are, is, one, would hiring a long-term sub be any different financially for that position where one of our employees has picked up that 1.2? And then second, are our teachers being paid when they cover for a missing colleague? Because I didn't recall that in our contract.
So we have a couple of, so number one, right now, we hire and pay all our subs. So the HR department spends the same amount of time onboarding a substitute as they would a teacher, administrator, a full-time staff member. So it is labor-intensive, and then we have to pay them the rate. By looking at a contracted service provider, they will do the recruitment, the onboarding, all the incentivizing to try to get our fill rates up, at a, of course, at a fee, but they only get paid when they fill a vac, you know, an absence. So you call out sick, substitute is there, we get what we need, they get a percentage on top of what the sub gets, and everyone's happy. Right now, it's an extensive process to onboard folks that may or not, may not pan out over time, and it's a lengthy process. I think it was mentioned by Mr. Peterson. So I think it'll relieve some of the work that's being done, and we're anticipating a cost-neutral because they're going to have a lot more time, resources. This is what they do. They, they will also provide a staff member here at central office that we will have as the point person for any issues, any, any problems, any questions. So we're encouraged by the presentations we've received from outside providers that will then take on the heavy lifting, transition our current substitute pool over to employees of the provider, and then we are out of the substitute business, so to speak. They provide training, they do all of those things, as well as provide pathways for eligible candidates into the teaching ranks. So it's, it's a win-win for the, for the district. It also then gives our HR department more time to spend on recruitment and retention of certified and non-certified full-time employees.
And thank you for that. I don't see the cost, I don't see how this is a zero. That's the part that I'm missing. Right now, when we don't fill a substitute position, we have a hole, people, and I'm not saying that this might not be worth an expenditure, because I know I don't like hearing when high school students get sent home early because classes were canceled. You know, I don't like hearing that our LAS teacher is having to get pulled from perhaps a task, an important task, to cover a classroom missing teacher. So I'm, I'm not saying that there isn't a value in and of itself. I don't see the cost-zero part of this. That's what I'm missing.
There's substitute reduction in the line items. I mean, we're not on subs tonight, but, or staff salaries, but when in, there's multiple substitute cuts in the line items for salaries.
And.
Okay.
It's in, okay, so first, just, it's in the budget. Because we were talking about attrition, we're talking about substitutes, we're talking about recruitment and talent and being able to attract and retain the best staff. We put this in as a cost-neutral because it's a big priority for us to do to free up the HR department, to be able to do the true recruitment and not just be constantly churning, you know, substitutes. And with the assumption that, well, when you look at the attrition report and you look at the assumptions behind the cost of attrition, we're actually over in our sub-line right now because of the fact that we have vacancies on the, on the teaching side. We're over-budget on the, on the substitute side. That's because it's not just subs, but we're hiring more long-term subs, and we're doing the overages for teachers to cover those classes. So the assumption here is we would, we would hope that we would have some savings, and if we don't, we're going to see, you know, less need on the substitute side because we're going to be doing a better job filling those vacancies. So there's a relationship between those three pieces.
Okay, it just feels like a shell game. That's, that's what I'm not getting about this. If a sub costs $100 a day and we hire a company, are they charging, I assume, $100 a day plus a fee? Therefore, this can't be cost-zero. That's what I'm not getting. I'm at a real simple level of the finance here. I understand, I understand the different line, and, and, Ms. Jacobson, I'm happy to move on. It's only because it was on these enhancement pages that I was bringing it up. But I understand that, you know, when, when we need more subs, it's probably because our staff line is down, but the substitutes themselves, this is going to cost more. And I'm not saying it's not worthwhile. I just don't like calling it again and again net zero when it's not, unless someone can tell me how it's not. Again, keep the, I'm not Mrs. Kelly, so drop the, drop the finance IQ level. Am I correct that instead of a sub being $100 a day, it's a sub $100 a day plus a fee?
That's correct, yeah. And, and we are assuming that that fee differential, so let's just pretend it's $10. $100 a cost, it's $10 that we're paying that right now for inappropriate staff to do stuff because we don't have the subs. Now, it may cost more. We don't, we don't have that experience yet. So we put it in the budget as cost-neutral, and we're going to monitor it.
And we've, we've also been approached by the FEA now, and we were negotiating now, as teachers cover classes for that occasional absence, there's going to be a cost to that. And when you add up the cost, it exceeds what we pay a current substitute, so.
And the management clause doesn't cover the fact that you have that free time in your day and you're asked to cover?
No. Well, a lot of times, they're going, they're being called at times that are, they're prep time, not.
Okay, I, I apologize. I'm not looking to get any further weeds. It was just the cost, the net zero part was bothering me.
While we're on that topic, I just had two kind of technical questions. You referenced other districts. What other districts? Have you spoken to districts that use this? What, what districts are they?
Yes, I have. So Guilford, Madison, Bridgeport, Norwalk, they all have a management company, and they rave about the management company. Like Mr. Testani just said, it definitely takes stress off of the HR, but it also helps with recruitment and really having that company just recruit for substitutes. That's all they do, so that it allows the staff to recruit for the other positions that we do have available.
Okay, and then the other part of the question is, how many substitute management companies are there out there? Are we going to have to choose from a lot? Do we have to put this out to bid? I just, how would that work?
So there's two that we're going to choose from. So we saw presentations today from two. Those are the top two. There are a few out there, but these are the ones that are considered the best in the business.
Mr. Asa?
Yeah, just to follow up to that. So just as Mrs. Gerber said, so will this be an RFP?
We're going to speak with our new purchasing agent at the town to determine if it will have to be an RFP. They are on state consortium, so that might be acceptable. But we are looking at pricing and all the factors that you would consider, price and quality, you know, without a formal RFP, but that's to be determined.
Okay, and I just have another piggyback on this, if that's okay? So with regards to the long-term subs, would this also cover that? And the reason I ask is I know that the building principals generally are very involved with hiring long-term subs to fill, like, let's say, a maternity leave or disability or something like that. How would that be affected?
Yes, this, this would be for all of our substitutes. The exception would be when our student teachers become interns, then they are able to substitute. But for a long-term, covering a maternity leave, covering a sick leave, it would definitely go to the company.
So would that take away the ability for the building principal to have input and on that interview process?
It will not. So the company will partner with not only HR, because they'll have a staff in the office, but they'll also partner with all the building leaders to ensure that if they're recommending somebody, they'll be able to be hired.
Just two more quick questions. Question A 38 of mine to Mr. Mancusi regarding the location. And I, I do hear the second part of your answer that there could be issues of coordination if we moved one of our Early Literacy Academy classrooms. But as part of a budget discussion, because I don't know where all the children are coming from, I didn't know if there would be savings, as in transportation, if we moved one of the locations. It could be a separate discussion of whether this is academically a wise move or not, but in terms of budget, would there be an impact by moving one?
When we initially opened the Early Literacy Academy, this is year two now, there was, you know, no cost for the transportation for that. So I'm assuming that would remain the same.
Oh, so it's just, the students coming from other schools are just getting like the first stop on a McKinley bus, for example, or, gotcha. Okay, thank you, that helps. And then finally, I'm just going to toss this out to, through the chair to Mr. Testani, that I'm, I've asked somewhere in all of this for a new chart of just who's reporting to whom and what's, because we have an awful lot of moving parts with our administration, which I very much respect the new eye that you're bringing to this and what we're looking at. I am concerned about our MLL students and the leadership for them. I think our director of elementary ed is, it's getting close on to two and a half jobs in one person. Hope you love it here. But it's, I do consider those to be students who really, we need a sharp focus on. They're a very important part of our district improvement plan, and there needs to be leadership of that staff and the integration into our classes, et cetera. And I get concerned that because it's not a huge number of students, it's easy for that to get lost a bit. And that's through, I'm not trying to accuse anybody of neglect, but just, I would be interested in looking at that chart of organization, if, and if that's something that could get some attention of, is this the best way to do this? That's all.
There has been some change in responsibilities, and there's, that focus is more of a priority for that position, and the supervision of the principals has been relieved from that individual. So we kind of are reorganizing and re-titling in preparation for the end and the new school year.
So that's definitely something I'm interested in more information about. Thank you.
Mrs. Vitale?
Thank you. So I don't necessarily really have a question. I just wanted to discuss my, my question A 21. Or at least put it out there for the public. I wrote about the district-wide student well-being, and I know we have it in here for teacher leader for school psychology and adding two district-wide school psychologists, which I understand the need for the psychologists. It was clarified in here as mainly for the evaluations needed going forward, especially with our chronic absenteeism. And I understand school psychologists perform the evaluations, can't be done by a social worker. What's concerning to me is, because I think so often we always try to make do with what we have and not necessarily ask for what we, we actually need. And I appreciate, Mr. Mancusi, you stating in your answer that you, the data requested, you know, you were working on it, because I did ask for a lot, sorry. What I just want to point out to everybody, because we always hear about mental health, we've heard about it a lot, we've seen what the pandemic did to our children, being removed from school. from school and remote learning and learning loss and anxiety and all the other mental health issues that went along with it, and now our redistricting discussions. We've heard nothing but mental health concerns for our children being moved from schools. I just want everybody to be aware, because it didn't really make any noise at the Board of Health meeting last week, that it was reported that comparatively in school years now, we didn't, they did not use COVID school years. So the last year they used was 18, 19 school year. In the months of August through December, comparatively to this year, there was a 264% increase in mental health visits to the school nurse in our high schools alone. That's just to the nurse. That's not to the guidance center, social workers, guidance counselors, school psychologists. And I can't imagine that their caseloads are not completely overwhelmed. I don't know what they are at the elementary school. I don't have the data for the middle school. But seeing that number for the high school certainly goes along with everything that we've been hearing from our, our families. So as we move forward in budget season and discussions on this item in particular with these psych, two psychologists and the teacher leader, I just want to keep in mind what other help our guidance departments might be needing. I know there's always talk about social workers. Where are these social workers? Where, we, we added some, we cut the art program a couple of years ago, we added social workers. Where are they? It would be nice to know how many are, well, you know, what their, who is at what school? What do their caseloads look like? How much have they increased over the years? Do we need to support them in any other ways? Because I just can't imagine, if that's the number just for the school nurse visits, I can't imagine that's not also affecting our guidance counseling department and our staff. Just want to put it out there.
If I can just make a quick comment. Your, your comments are greatly appreciated. And, and anybody who's listened to me throughout this pandemic, it's, it's been so challenging and coming out of it continues to be challenging. I will say, you know, in terms of anecdotally, schools that we've heard from, staff from schools that we've heard from, where there are particular challenges right now are at McKinley and at Woods. That doesn't mean the other schools are not challenged in terms of students' mental health, social, emotional, behavioral needs. Those are the two schools that have, have called me and we've spoken and actually met with them and some of their staff to review caseloads. We are collecting all of that caseload information because I think it's important for us to get that, and I appreciate the request. I also just want to remind the board, and this is going back four or five years now when we had our special education audit done, that was highlighted as one of the strengths of the Fairfield Public Schools was the mental health slash behavioral supports that we have compared to like districts. And that included our psychologists, our social workers, our school counselors, and our BCBA's. So they're all very busy. Needs have increased as a result. They were increasing pre-COVID. They certainly have increased since COVID. We have now are in year two of having all of our staff, every staff member in the Fairfield Public Schools receives QPR training so they can recognize the signs of when kids are like in, 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 you know, in danger of self-harm. So, so we can identify those potential signs and then we can react and support students and families so we don't, you know, we don't experience another tragedy. We've trained all psychologists, social workers, and school counselors in a suicide assessment. So when kids are, and, you know, they've gone through some PD on this, we've updated the suicide prevention and post-vention board policy a couple of years ago to try to stay ahead of the curve of monitoring and evaluating and responding to the needs of our students' mental health needs. But we will get that information for you.
In that same vein, the district-wide student wellbeing, the new director of student support and mental health services, I'm noticing that in here, the proposal is that this position will be funded with ARP ESSER funds in year one, and then it says later on that it would shift entirely into the BOE budget. If someone could just explain, you know, that decision-making and putting in a known cliff or phasing it as we've done before or something like, just, just the process around that. Because I'm also thinking from a recruiting and, you know, retention standpoint, something like that might seem iffy to someone who might be, so I'm just, if you could just speak to that decision.
Okay. So the decision was, it's intended to initiate a bigger change in that, in the area. So that director is needed to build out the initiative?
I'm not questioning the need for the position. I'm questioning the source of the funding.
Currently, we're looking for that position to replace the teacher leader position that is currently in the budget. The teacher leader for school psychology and school social workers. So that is a 10-month position with 20-day requirement to work additional 10 days before, 10 days after the school. It is, so there's already funding built into, you know, the board budget. The difference in the two salaries, because it would be common administrative position versus a teacher position, is.
At then, the net that's going into ESSER is the 49K? Is that what I'm under? Okay. So there's already funding in here as an offset, however, the net that's.
No, excuse me, I may have missed.
Yeah, the 49K is the net BOE impact, which I hear the two psych offset by the teacher leader. There's an additional 148, I believe, that's also in the grant. That's the full 1.0 for the salary. And, and, you know, yes, it is in the ARP ESSER with the intention that it would come into the board budget after year two, understanding that after FY 24, 25. So next year, it's, it would be in the ARP ESSER as proposed, and then in the following year, we would have to put it into the board budget.
So 24, 25?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. And Mrs. Rotelli? I'm going to ask our ADs to come up and give us a question, if they wouldn't mind, on just our new teams that are happening, what's going on with that? I see there's a cost here of 66 for 60 for stipends, but just want to get a little bit more information for all of the other things that will be associated with that and just, since you're on here on an enhancement, and I saw you there, I thought I'd bring you up on that. If you could just clarify for rugby, is that varsity JV freshman? Is that, is that an intermural? Like, is that also a varsity?
So right now rugby is a club team. And as it expands, we're looking to have teams for both males and females from the freshmen to the varsity level. So it'd be freshman JV and varsity.
For next year?
Currently, we are going to have, we're hoping to have this year varsity for boys and girls, possibly JV for the boys based on how many numbers actually come out of the team.
So the point is to grow this over time as the interest increases, and it would be an actual varsity sport though going forward?
Correct.
Thank you. All right, then on to ice hockey.
So the budget request included two separate ice hockey teams. So if the numbers remain high, as we anticipate, next year we would have two, we would have a team for Ludlow and we would have a team for Ward. So the funding was requested to have full coaching stipends, stipends for all the other costs associated with the teams, including transportation, equipment, ice time, things of that nature.
So what's shown here as an enhancement, the 66, that's just for the stipends, but the other items that are necessary for those teams, the rugby and the ice hockey, are already incorporated into the ask? That's, that's in the other areas of the budget?
Correct.
Mrs. Kelly?
Hi. I have just a couple of questions because I fully plead ignorance on how this whole process works. What is the magic number of how many players you need that's kicking you out of the co-op?
So you can't have more than 15 kids per team. Our, per school. So if Ludlow has 16 and Ward only has eight, we still wouldn't be able to co-op because one of, one of us is over the 15. So we petitioned to the CIC as a league. The FCAC requested for that number to go up to 17, and it was denied. So it's currently still at 15.
Okay. So by having two teams, do we run the risk of Ludlow having a team and Ward not having a team next year or vice versa?
That's possible, but one of us could co-op with another town. So for example, if Ludlow has 20 kids and Ward only has 10, Ludlow can have their own team and Ward can co-op with Staples, for example, who might have low numbers.
Okay. And do we have a sense of what the current numbers are? What I would just hate to do is, is this going to fluctuate every year? Are we going to be talking about, okay, next year we have enough that we can have two separate teams? The year after that, we're going to be searching for somebody who wants to be our partner? And then the year after that, we're eligible for states? The next year, we're not eligible for states? Like, is it constantly going to be fluid or do we commit to two teams and that is the model?
The possibility is for it to be fluid and going up and down based on the year, based on how many kids come out for the team. So we're just trying to plan for every scenario.
But the eligibility for the states is if we're a co-op or not?
Okay.
A legal co-op or an opt-out program?
Gotcha. And we do currently have a varsity and a JV. So in total-ish, how many players are there, there?
There's 18 on the varsity roster and I believe 22 on the JV roster.
Okay. 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 And we opted for one team this year because, like, what was the rationale on the one team this year? We were just needed to get our ducks in a row or?
We've been basically just watching the numbers and see how it goes, and we were waiting to see what the CICC said based on that initial request to move it up to 17. Unfortunately, we didn't get it, so we went with the numbers that we had. And we were fairly close when we put in our initial numbers. I think once we knew we were, we had too many and were going to not be part of the CIC tournament, more kids may have decided to play since it was, it was already over at that point.
So in the early fall, we put out a feeler to, for the numbers for registration. So we did like a formal registration poll, and the numbers were, were higher than the co-op numbers, higher than the 15. And so we put in our application with the numbers that we had, hoping that it was going to go to 17. We were denied the application and fast forward six weeks, even after the application, the numbers then dropped down below the 15. But at the time of the application, they were above the CIC limit. So the application goes in with what we had for preregistration.
And do the same rules apply to the girls' teams? Do they have different rules?
The girls' team is a varsity team in our eyes, but the CIC does not have the same rules because it is not considered a CIC sport. So they don't actually govern the girls' hockey team. So our numbers there don't have to abide by these same limitations.
Mrs. Guernsey?
Just to follow up on Mrs. Kelly, can you just help me understand for the JV team for boys, is it important that those, if, if in fact there would be two separate high school varsity teams, is important for the JV teams to be separated by high school as well? Or could those be combined? Or is that not advantageous for the student players?
I don't think we would have the number to, if we had two separate teams, I don't think we would have the numbers to field a JV and a varsity. The point of the co-op is to grow the sport, so it's important to keep a JV team like a feeder to the varsity. So I think if we were to split into two different teams, there would be two varsity teams only.
Thank you for explaining that.
Okay. Maybe more questions on athletics if we get different parts. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
One last thing. When will you know? Like, is it literally, like you said, you do a preregistration and it's the number of kids and I, I just don't know how, like.
Yeah, I think the boys' hockey currently falls under me at Fairfield Ward. I think I'm probably going to have to do some meetings postseason, you know, speak to the youth programs, kind of see what the numbers are coming up. There's always, you know, I think we'd like to communicate as early as possible so not to lose kids to private schools just for the sake of hockey. Certainly, there's always the risk of losing kids to boarding schools with hockey. It's one of those unique sports. So I think we're going to probably have to have an ongoing, regular conversation about hockey numbers and, you know, speak to some of the feeder travel programs just to kind of see what numbers we have. I mean, we're hearing anecdotal information, but that's certainly nothing to rely on.
Sorry. And one last, sorry, one last question. I'm, under the co-op model, my, and I could be wrong, but I, my understanding is that anyone who even registers is technically rostered. Is that true? So no cut, we're not cutting anyone?
Correct. Under the co-op model, we do not make cuts. But if they register, they need to come to the tryouts and the, but we had students register this year that didn't show up, right? So they're not on the roster. But if you register and you come, you will either be rostered on the varsity or the JV.
Okay. And given that we probably don't have the numbers, I'm assuming that would still happen, but if we are two separate teams and not a co-op, there is the possibility of cuts?
Correct.
Quick follow-up on that idea of, I know that we open fall sports, then at a certain point you open winter sports, and then you open up spring sports at another time. Is there any benefit to just opening up all sports at one time? And then you might have a, or at least fall and winter or closer together, not so late, so you would have a better idea earlier?
When we have co-ops and we have to report those numbers to the CIC, we usually open those specific sports up before we do for the rest of the season. So for example, for hockey, we opened it up last spring to see what our numbers were. And we did the same for our boys' swim team, who was also up for a renewal.
Great. Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else on one to four? Okay. Moving into the executive summary, pages seven to 10. Anyone? Okay. Instructional services, page 45 to 48.
Sorry. Pardon?
Back on executive summary, real quick.
Okay, sure.
Sorry. Maybe I'm not understanding with this, but when I asked question B3 about the pension, and I think I already put a follow-up question in late, like at the midnight hour, right before I got here. I, I understand that, I guess, the newer employees are increasing the number of the 401A participants, but is there a, not necessarily equal dollar amount, but is there some sort of offset then where, where, like, it's not just a 3%, we're not going to keep doubling these numbers percentage-wise as the new employees come in? I have to imagine there's some sort of offset coming from somewhere else, and I just didn't know where that was.
I can get back to you on that. I will certainly get back to you on that. It is based on the actuals, but breaking it out between the new mem, you know, people coming in versus those grandfathered in, yeah. Like, I.
as the new employees come in? I have to imagine there's some sort of offset coming from somewhere else and I just didn't know where that was.
I can get back to you on that. I will certainly get back to you on that. It is based on the actuals, but breaking it out between the new mem, you know, people coming in versus those grandfathered in, yeah. Like, I'll be happy to get that and I'll link it in the document.
Sorry, it was another question about the, the supplies. I think it was for the, is that seven to 10 or is that in the backup? Do you want to, the supplies? Those in text, are you talking about page 71 to 82 or in seven to 10? Pay, when we get, and if that's okay? Thanks. Seven to 10. Instructional services, page 45 to 48. Mrs. Guernsey?
Just a question on page 48. Under Fairfield Woods Middle School, the sports cost decrease over last year is, you know, over 30%. Could you help me to understand why that change is made or proposed? So it's line 30, sports cost middle school, under Fairfield Woods Middle School, page 48.
This is part of the school-based allocation, so determined at the school level. We can get back to you about the decision. So they give a, they're given a per pupil allocation and then they determine how to spend it. So we can get back to you on that.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just curious because it's such a large decrease and wondering if the services are being decreased as well. Thank you.
Yeah, it looks like their actuals are higher, so sometimes they do, they do a lot of trans, sometimes they do transfers within the school year and I will get back to you on that.
Mrs. Vitale?
I'm wondering if Mr. Mancrius, you can just speak to the decrease of 900,000 in people personnel services. I believe that we did go out to bid for nursing and that drove some of it, but just a little more color on that would be appreciated.
Sure, you'll see a decrease not only in nursing, but you'll also see it in the professional expenses of contracted speech, which, as you know, we did go out to bid, we worked with the town, RFP'd, went out to bid. And we got a lower rate for our contracted speech. And as well as our consultation services. So the nursing, that came in, that's almost a $400,000 savings from what we projected this year based on the number of kids who had private one-to-one nursing to meet significant medical needs. Primarily on transportation. Some parents have chose to transport their, their students to and from school. And also, you know, some students who have returned to district from out placements. We've worked with staff on fading that full-time nursing support. So that's, and, and we did go out to bid and we got a more preferable rate. With the occupational therapy, you'll see some savings there. That's based on actual hours. We did go out to bid on that and we had, you know, the RFP rate for the years in consultation with Constellation, who is our contract service provider. The estimate that we're giving now is the actual hours that we will use. So it is less than what was initially stated in the RFP. There was a question about are hours decreasing or are we, you know? The only way that hours decrease or we lessen student hours for, for a related service or for any service for that matter in special ed is through the PPT process. So if a student has met goals and objectives or has made significant progress on goals and objectives, the PPT may consider decreasing service. So that's the only way a service will be decreased. So I don't know if that answered your question. I did a lot of talking on that.
No, it doesn't. I, thank you. I think it's important that there were a number of factors that played into that. I would be curious just in terms of how, and if it's too labor-intensive, not important, but how much was due to reduction in services that were decided as part of the PPT process? I think that there is a little bit of risk there in that services might get taken away. And as we've seen in the past, that services may then need to potentially be added again through the PPT process. So want to make sure that we're just not cutting ourselves too, you know, too fine of a line there.
What I can say is we will make every attempt to get you some information. I will meet with my, my team behind me, who we do discuss this and we will see what we can gather for you. I know Mrs. Kelly asked a question too about breakdowns in that area and we were attempting to work on that today and then it was becoming a little bit more difficult than it seemed. So no, we're going to try to attempt to get something because I think it would be interesting to see that.
We talked about it in finance committee, so not surprised that, on the same wavelength on that.
Anyone else, 45 to 48? Okay, moving on, tuition, 59 to 61. Anyone? Sorry, everyone, there's a lot of papers that everyone's looking through for follow-ups. Go ahead, Mrs. Max and Kelly.
Thank you.
For question, I assume, B47. I definitely understand and appreciate, as you wrote here, the increase in mental health and social, emotional and behavioral needs of our students in terms of regarding the, as I'd written, you know, despite the significant district investment, the tuition numbers continue to rise. What I'm not understanding here is as we invest, that's supposed to be helping to bring more students back. And so are the numbers that disproportionate? That despite all the students we're bringing back, we have that many, we have the equal number plus more leaving whose needs we are, whose needs we are not meeting? Is that basically what you're telling me?
There's a couple things here. We believe strongly that mental health of students primarily have increased and continue to increase, you know, at all levels. We believe the investment that the board has made in developing in-district programs has allowed us to maintain many, many, many students in district that otherwise we would be unable to do. There's also been, you know, since COVID, we now have students stay with us till 21. So there is a cost attached to that in terms of an increase in the number of students who, who stay with us till 22 that prior to the change in the law didn't. So there is a cost attached there. And then the change in the excess cost revenue has, you know, increased our out-of-pocket expense in terms of tuition. But I don't know if that answered your question. I could, I could try to get more specific information in terms of where students are placed, the average cost of placements that our students are at right now. You know, tuition costs have increased across the board, some places more, more than others.
I guess what's always behind the question is, is what do we need to do next? I mean, that, that's ultimately, it's where are we falling short? What do we need to consider, look to? And again, in, in some cases, if we examine that, outplacement not only might be more affordable, but also better for, for the child than something that we could do in-house. So that's real, I mean, it's, yes, it's a financial decision. It is obviously, I mean, a financial question. Obviously, it is a significant budget impact, but more to that, you know, in terms of the child, of what could we be doing or offering more? Like, is there something percolating on the burner that you're thinking we should, we might want to start looking to this in a few years?
I do believe, and I'm grateful for the support of the board in the SEL work that we, we, you know, that has taken place over the past year and year plus. And I remember back when Mrs. Jacobson kind of, you know, charged us to do the needs assessment. At first, I didn't realize how much work was entailed in that. But the work that did take place last year and now continues this year, I think over time, we're going to see, you know, growth in students' social, emotional skills and mental health needs as we respond and intervene earlier. But that is over time.
Can I follow up to that?
Mrs. Vitale?
You may not be able to answer this because it's not really Fairfield Public School-specific. But given the rising mental health needs of our students, you know, we hear how it is so challenging for families to find support outside of the school district. Do you find, just in terms of service providers? I imagine that that puts more of a burden on school districts, that families are looking for support and understandably, they're looking to, to us to support their children. And I know that you really can't answer that, but I think it's important, a bigger, a bigger conversation in terms of what we can do as a community and the state in order to support our children's mental health needs. Because it's falling, it's falling on school districts and as Ms. Max and Kelly points out, it is a big budget driver. So I appreciate the question and really any additional information that you could provide to us, anecdotally or data-wise, you know, what you're hearing from, you know, neighbors or other school districts?
Well, Dr. Parrish and I and Mr. Gudison back there last week sat in on a meeting with the, all the mental health staff and administration at, you know, one of our middle schools. And it was that exact sentiment was discussed, that outside resource providers are, you know, they're booked, they're not available for several months. So a lot of the support that kids need and that families require to support their children at home falls on the school. So it's something we're happy to do, but it, it, it is, you know, it's a challenge at times.
And I ask because I know that, and if Ms. Jacobson hasn't already planned it, we usually meet with the state delegation this time of year just to share some of our concerns, just school-related and just youth-related. So welcome the opportunity for just to follow up on that and any other information you can provide offline so we can better advocate.
Following up on that, Mrs. Laborious, I know in the budget book you had talked about the tuition reimbursement statute, you know, I had testified on that. But you say in this budget book that you're thinking that they're going to fix it. Do we have any other information about that at this time or, because I'd be happy to follow up on that?
Are you talking about the 70% reimbursement? There was, the Legislative Liaison for CASBO did mention that, but I haven't heard anything on the state side from about an adjustment there, so.
I'll bring it up.
Yes. I'm sorry, I thought, did Mr., did you have a point to follow?
Just to your point, I, to some folks that I've talked to out in the field, to what Rob mentioned, getting appointments and a lot of the folks that have moved away from service, providing services to children and those that do, there's a lot that will not accept insurances, it's cash-only. So there are a lot of barriers to accessing mental health services outside of the school. I think that's going to be a real challenge moving forward, given the numbers that are all across all school districts and communities. So something that we need to start to think about. And to your point with the tuition, I, I think there's less restrictions when it comes to some of these outside institutions in terms of certifications and things of that nature to provide the educational component and in some, it's hard to convince parents to stay in district when they see their child struggling. I'm not necessarily convinced that all the time these outside placements are having as much success as maybe we would if we had more time to, and the resources in, in terms of the behavior, behavioral health supports. But those are expensive investments to make.
Mrs. Kelly?
Sorry, just piggyback, backing on all of this. I mean, to Ms. Max and Kelly's question and the answer says to me that it feels like we are just literally sticking our finger in the dam and losing. We are losing the fight, okay? More outflows than inflows, I hate to talk about it in terms of cash flows, but that's what it, it sounds like to me as far as people. And, and the same time, based on what Bonnie said, we're asking for two psychologists? Like, there's just a disconnect between what we're all saying and what we're seeing here. Now, look, I'm not naive, I know that costs money, I know it, but like, there are things in here that we're asking for that we could probably live with, live without, I don't know. But I think from what we're hearing, two is better than zero. But it also doesn't sound like we, I mean, this is both a financial, but it's a human issue. And I feel like we're all addressing it at the table, but we're not addressing it in here. And this will translate to hopefully results, and I just don't know why we're not doing that.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with, but I'm not disagreeing with you. I don't think anyone would. I don't know if we said we'd, we'd be able to staff 10 more school psychologists. I mean, it is an area of shortage to be able to go out and find 10 additional and then not be able to provide the service after we've.
Right, but what I'm not hearing is how many we think we need. I think we've asked for two because we feel like that's a reasonable number, it's a safe number, it's a number that's going to get approved most likely than, more likely than not. But what I'm not hearing is we're asking for two, but this question is telling me we need 10. And if we can't find them, that's another story. What do we need?
Well, it may not be school psychologists, it may just be mental health providers that can provide, not necessarily a school psychologist or a school social worker, but I think we need to start being more creative and innovative in saying that we need mental health providers that have an expertise in working with children, not to say that our psychologists and social workers don't, but just more specifically tied to working on the mental health needs, not on the testing component. You know, testing a student to see if they qualify for services takes a significant amount of time. That is not addressing mental health concerns. I think if we can get dedicated staff specifically to do that, that may be to more of our advantage than having folks trying to do mental health support while they're testing and completing an assessment that takes six to eight hours.
Yeah, I hear you, but I just know that we're not hearing really what we need. And at the end of the day, if you came to me and said, would you be willing to sacrifice new pre-calculus textbooks for one mental health provider? I would, I would do that. And that's coming from a math geek, like, pre-calc is pre-calc, it hasn't changed. Mental health needs have changed. And so in my opinion, that's the conversations, those are the conversations we should be having right now. And I just, I think we're all saying it, but then we just, it sits out, it just sits out there. That's all.
Mrs. Max and Kelly?
Just through the chair to Mrs. Kelly, the only part of that that I would disagree with is, I mean, just as part of our whole district improvement plan, we had an entire page on the SEL work of the district, which we are doing in-house with the bodies that we have, that training the staff to better meet the needs of.
we have, that training the staff to better meet the needs of their students who are right there in front of them. So I think, I think it's complicated, you know, and I think, but I think there's a much more that's being done than just through the hiring of two people with all the training we're doing of staff and what they're then doing in the classroom to maybe head off at the past lots of issues. And so it's, I actually appreciate that we're, again, if, if the need were absolutely there and it was definite and we couldn't do it otherwise, then let's hear the argument. But I do think what we're hearing is that staff is coming at this, this a variety of ways and that, that's, there are, there's going to be progress there by virtue of all this training that we're doing. At least that's what they're setting out to achieve.
If I can respond to that, just based solely on the statistics that Bonnie just said, though, if somebody sat at this table and told us that test scores were down 200 and some odd percent, I guarantee you, we'd be having a conversation about immediate interventions or immediate changes or immediate staff changes. And increases in mental health, just to the nurse, like you said, was up 200 and some odd percent, two psychologists, that's all we're asking for.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yeah, I appreciate the discussion. I do think it's something we tend to talk about. And I guess my point in bringing up those numbers is, and what I, what I asked Mr. Mancusi for in this and the data that I know that they'll be working on is, are the caseloads? Because that really will, to me, be determining these types of decisions for everybody. I mean, if you're seeing a 264% increase in visits to the nurse, what are the staff in the, in the guidance centers seeing? What are their caseloads? How are they managing it? I know it'll take the pressure off to have staff actually doing the evals. I know that. What I asked for was their caseloads, the Level 1 PPTs that they're in, the crisis calls, all of these things that take away from the staff working with the kids. And if the percentages have gone up and our staff have, you know, a zillion kids they're working with, and that's just not tenable, I mean, are we driving staff away because they just can't take it and they're burnt out? Like, I just want to make sure that we have the support that the kids need. Because sometimes that staff member is keeping that kid in, in school and keeping them from being a tuition line item, when really all it is, is the attention of that staff member that will keep them in school. And so that's all. I mean, it's not, that's all, because it's, it's a lot. But it is very worthy of the discussion and very worthy of the investment to support our kids, to support our staff and make sure that they're getting the help that they need. Because otherwise, you won't see an improvement in the achievement data. Because you need kids to, you know, be mentally healthy to sit in the classroom and pay attention and take tests. So to me, this is much more important than everything else.
I have a follow-up. I had asked a question on our current count. And we're well below what we had budgeted for. So I'm just wondering if you're either expecting more to come in the second half of the year, or if we're just seeing that these placements are costing more, or a combination of both?
You're talking about that 76 number? Yeah, I'm going to recheck that. No, I actually.
I was going to say.
I'm going to, I, I'm going to recheck that.
Okay. That would just be helpful as a follow-up for next week, because that number is way below what we budgeted for. So it led me to believe that the placements are just costing more, so.
I apologize for that. That was late this afternoon when we, when I was giving that number. We're going to, we're going to recheck it. When I was looking at it tonight, I was.
Okay. All right.
Sorry.
Thank you so much for that. Go ahead, Mrs. Vitale.
And it's also just the excess cost being.
Yeah, that's like.
That's also affecting it. Just that it's important just to keep that in, looking at that number. It's not necessarily that the tuitions are just going up. It's also that we're not getting, we're not getting less, less revenue. So that.
It's not.
But that wouldn't be reflected here.
It offsets.
The revenue has its section, correct?
It offsets tuition, right? In.
Yes, this is the net after reimbursement.
Yeah.
Yeah, look in the back.
Which line are you talking about?
So let's back up. So lines, so on page 61, the tuition line that is being asked for next year is 8961227.
Oh, yes, it's net of the, yeah, it's net of, which is why you, you have to always look at, so when, when we prepared the special ed document for the Board of Finance last year, I think they appreciated it because, because that fluctuation was so great year over year, to tell the story of what's happening in tuition, which is where we booked that excess cost revenue, you always have to add that. So you do the gross and then show the revenue and the net. So this is the, this is just net of the tuition.
I would agree. There was a lot of frustration with the other town bodies, too, that we were in deficit for many years on this. And yes, it took a lift to get us right-sized and closer to where we should be. Totally appreciate that. But it's still a volatile number. And then we got hit with the lower reimbursement rate on top of that. So.
After getting higher last year.
It's just.
It got higher last year and then it was even so.
You really just don't want to.
That's why you have to look at each piece. You know, you really do. You have to keep track of each piece.
Yeah, I think that, you know, you look at the number, you think it's straightforward, that the tuitions are going up, but it's, it's nuanced. I just.
Okay. If there's nothing else on tuition, we will move on to other purchase services, page 63 to 70. I don't know. All right, Mr. Peterson.
This is the time that we all have a chuckle about me asking about copier budgets. I've asked for six years, this is my sixth budget, being on this board, for actuals for budgeting. Last year, you said you were going to get a card reader. This year, you copied and pasted the exact same sentence saying, we're going to get a copy, a card reader this year. Why, why didn't we get one? Why are we not paying any attention to what our actual usage is? And did you know that in the last, in the 12 years, the 12 budgets prior to, not counting the current school year, we've over-budgeted for this line by 11% on average, year in and year out?
I think we brought that down this year. And I do apologize for both the misplaced comma and for copying and pasting over this comment. So let me take a step back. We did start the card readers this year. When we talked about it last year, we didn't put in the budget because we assumed it would be cost-neutral. We put it in the, in the budget comments, but not as a add and a decrease. It was an offset.
You're saying that you described something you had no intention of putting into practice?
We were going to pilot it this year and we did start the pilot. And we were going to carry forward the savings into next year. It was delayed. It was delayed because we didn't anticipate that the software that we were using to do the counting on the inkjet printers is, is not compatible with our current copier. And so there was a lot of back and forth about licensing and how we could get that to be compatible. We worked it out. It's paper cut and it is now installed in central office with plans to roll it out to the rest of the district in the next few months.
Mr. Testa, sorry, if you're.
Yeah. And, and the savings is on the paper. And we will see the savings. We didn't take credit for the savings in the budget because next year is the year that we're going, going to implement it and watch it. And the following year was the year that we planned to set limits on, on copying in the machines. So because of the unpredictability of the behavior with the added, we didn't want people to move from, like, if we're tracking them on the copiers, they're just going to shift and use more of the inkjet printers. So we have to use one common software, was the decision of the IT department.
You're going to set limits next year, but you're not going to know what actuals this year are.
We do watch the actuals and I can provide that to you. We, when we went to a method this year of budgeting on a per pupil basis, rather than just historical, we can see where people are over, under what we would expect them to be. And we do have those counts and we are monitoring them. And I'm happy to share that in the link. So we do have reporting on counts by machine. What we don't have is by user, but the card reader will let us do that by user. And the hope is that it will also curb behavior, because when you have to go up to the machine and swipe your card, we, we do anticipate seeing a reduction and you do see a reduction in usage. Our copier, at least, will not go down. The investment of the card reader is afforded with the reduction of paper usage, which is really a net zero in year one.
I'm not going to belabor this point. I just, it's been a long time to get actual data, actual usage data. And it sounds like we still don't have that. We're not really going to have that.
I do have it and I'm more than happy to link it in the document, which I will do, Mr. Peterson. I apologize for not having it for today. But we do have that.
I'm just going to add, Mr. Peterson, we had this discussion because based on your comment, sense the level of frustration and, and I, I understand it completely. I think to Courtney's point, she was overruled by a department and was not supported. And that will not continue. We are going to link the card readers to the copying at, by any means necessary. So I, I think, you know, to her defense, I think she was, she was not supported in trying to make sure that that was executed fully.
I'm compelled. I'm just, I understand the frustration and the information that you, I'm just going to respond, in terms of the information that you've been seeking. And I don't mean to laugh at it. I understand, wanting to understand where the expenditures are going. But I also want to look at some of these numbers. And when you break this down by a per pupil basis, like, I'm just picking up like Ludlow. It's $1,500 for printing. That's literally a dollar a year per student. So I, I just want to, I want to balance the conversation with like, making sure we're not putting people on some sort of an unrealistic allowance for this, if that's what the need is. So I appreciate being able to get some baseline figures so that we don't tread into that territory in terms of what the need is without making it feel like, oh, my God, I'm like terrified to use a copier machine because of my allowance or what have you. So it, it's not a high per pupil amount. And I think that the younger, like, elementary seems to use a little bit more than our high schools, which would make sense. They're more on computers going forward than when they're younger. Younger, we want them using their hands and writing, right? We don't want them as much on the screen. So I'm just going to balance that. Go ahead.
I just want to say that, to be very specific, I have, I have less of an issue with the actual usage of, of the copiers and more of an issue that it's a black hole. And going back over those 12 years, the amount that we over-budgeted for this was almost $400,000. So yet, the numbers are small for individual schools, for individual years. But the inaccuracy with which we've approached this over the years has amounted to almost $400,000. And that's, that's primarily where my issue is.
Understood.
And one little piece to add, I would say it is important to benchmark because it does help us, like, so for example, New Canaan, they do set limits for copy usage, but you can go over that limit. So for example, if one department is not transitioning to more electro, you know, use of less paper, in the world where we came off COVID and we had some good successes of using devices to do some of the work that we were formerly doing. So your point is well-taken. I do think we did right-size the budget. I do think you'll see that our spending's in line this year. More transparency is important. I will give you those counts. And more information to come about the readers and the usage of the readers next year.
Mrs. Kelly?
I don't want to belabor this, but I was just wondering, in the beginning of the year, we talked about all the math packets that were making copies of that. Did that move the needle in any way, shape or form? Because that was a lot of packets. So where would I see that in here?
Central office. I mean, I think we absorbed it with reductions in other areas. But yeah, I mean, that was a pretty big cost. But we're reducing usage elsewhere. So we do encourage people to use central office for their big jobs. And that was one of the ones, so that's where you would see that cost. Again, we're coming down in other areas in other ways. So we printed less budget books this year.
All right. Anything else on 63 to 70? No? Okay. Supplies, texts and materials, pages 71 to 82. This is your supplies area, Mrs. Kelly?
It, it is, but I, I don't know why I have written on my sheet that it was on 163, the math pre-K through 5. So I don't want to ask prematurely about the TPA online subscription for accelerated six. That, that, I wrote page 163. If that's not in the right spot, then so be it. But I, I did have highlighted.
That was in the support?
That was in support information, yes.
So that's in support of this area? So it's.
Okay. My question there was really a follow-up to the answer that was given about the materials for summer sections, which it is what it is. But student textbooks and teacher additions for 11 schools. I know we haven't talked yet about the, what this program is going to look like. I guess that's coming later. But my impression was that it was not going to be at 11 schools. So I don't know what the need is for the math. Yeah.
Right now, we are kind of taking two steps back and kind of, to be honest with you, we've reached out to, and we could find one district, thanks to Ms. Maxine Kelly, who is doing an accelerated program. It's a little bit more than just math. So I've gotten the preliminary information and how they do that, what staffing criteria they, they utilize. There's more to come on that. For next year, basically, we're at a loss in terms of what's, what's next. We are going to schedule a meeting in the next two weeks with the parents who are currently, their students are in fourth grade and they'll be rising fifth graders, to start a conversation and try to see what is feasible for them before we make any decisions and have to just keep going back and forth. So that's where, to just be totally upfront and honest, we are right now going to square one and starting with the families and gathering their input to see what type of program they would be willing to have their child participate in. Because just going back and forth with staff and the board is not getting us anywhere.
Okay. I have like PTSD from last year about that. But.
I'm sorry.
No, it's not your fault. You were in here. It was not on your watch. It was like, we actually created this mess. Everybody at this table created that mess, including myself. I do have to ask about the pre-calculus textbooks, though, because I don't see an actual dollar amount unless that's specifically in here. I know it kind of gets lumped into all the things in there. And I just didn't know how much that was. And I have to ask again about the necessity of them, because pre-calc is pre-calc. Doesn't change.
I don't have the actual dollar amount with me in terms, I believe it is 130. But I don't want to, it might be 138 or somewhere around there. But that's an average or an approximate. With that being said, you're right, pre-calc is pre-calc. And there are textbooks currently in use that we held off from last year with. These are the newer editions of a pre-calc book. The former book is at least 10 years old, so it was an update. It would be a decision whether or not the district wants to move forward with a new book for the next 10 years until we have another review, or keep the current supplies and materials moving forward.
Okay, anyone else? I'm just going to follow up on the math. So if we don't know what we're doing, because we've had two memos, right? We had one memo that was going to be the math specialists that were going to take care of this in our home schools. And then we had another memo where we were going to be busing kids to middle schools. I think it's important for us to have an understanding of what we're doing because of what it might mean for this budget and what we need to provide for those kids. of what it might mean for this budget and what we need to provide for those kids in terms of what they're going to be doing next year, whether that's buses or whether that's books or whether that's whatever, math specialists or whatever it may be. So I'm going to want to know what we're doing in terms of what we might need to provide what they need next year. So how soon will we be having a decision on, on what we're doing?
Again, after we meet with the parents, I think we'll have a better understanding, but the intention is to utilize whatever resources that we currently have and how we're currently utilizing these and reallocating. It's not to increase the budget, so we're going to have to be creative in, in what we do, but I think.
So we'll be in their home schools? Like that's, that's been determined already?
Not sure, hopefully, but we may need to do something differently because there's been some feedback from some current parents in schools that there may be one child and if the one child is going to get pulled out one to one, initially, we've been told that the parent will not agree to that. That's not what they're looking for, for their child. So that's why, until we hear from the parents on what options we do have, you know, in terms of morning, going over to middle school, that was in one of the proposals. I've heard some feedback that some parents say, what about the children who go to lessons in the morning? How are they going to do their lessons and do that? So at this point, unless we can hear from parents to see what they'd be willing to do, I don't think there's any point in just keep throwing out ideas and having holes poked in them.
Mrs. Guernsey?
I so much appreciate the idea of surveying the parents, but I would not want the parents to drive the decision that we're making, so that's where I'm kind of confused.
Well, I don't think it's driving the decision for the future. I think having and looking at the program that we are aware, that's the only one, even the district we reached out to said they are aware that they may be the only one left in the state that does this. But I think for next year, the parents deciding and driving how we're going to be able to operate is, is relevant because right now, to your point, the mess was created and it's really about cleaning up the mess. I'm just going to put it out there.
It, understood, but also I, I think that there's a practical point here because I don't know that we can cater to the need of every parent and their choice. I mean, you already described multiple scenarios that didn't work for some parents, so I'm just concerned about that.
Well, I want to get to see, to your point, if it's two or three parents, then we may need to make a decision that may not be suitable or maybe we have to offer two different options that can, but the kids right now are the ones that are going to be impacted. So I mean, we, we have to get some understanding. If 95% of the parents are okay with one solution, then I think that's the solution we may need to go with just for next year, but I think to create a program long-term, if that's the intention of the board, I think that's going to be a much longer planning process.
Mrs. Maxine Cannelly?
Yeah, thank you. And, and I agree with Mrs. Guernsey. This isn't, we can't, you know, serve up a, you know, piecemeal approach. On the other hand, I actually enormously appreciate that we're taking this step back. We have promised these fourth graders that they would be served. I actually, and I have not spoken with any of them recently, but I do believe that they would appreciate the fact that they're being engaged in the conversation. I do think it's, I agree that it was, it was not workable to have this memo comes to the board, board fairly effectively rips it apart, sends it back, sends us another, and that, that just wasn't workable and it wasn't fair to staff and it got frustrating for us. So I actually appreciate that we're taking a breath. Let's talk to the parents. Obviously, I would assume it's with no promises, you know, it's, we need to hear from you, we want to make this workable. We appreciate that you took that step last summer and now we need to serve your children. And I think it's also important for parents of current third graders to know that this isn't necessarily the experience, excuse me, the experience that their children will be having. You know, we've got some seismic things going on. We are reconsidering the gifted and talented program. We're going to be having someone, you know, perhaps from existing staff, perhaps somebody new who's going to be providing leadership to math and that person's perspective, I think, would be very much appreciated on what this is going to look like. You know, you've got more information from another district that does accelerate within the program. So the fact that we won't have this by next week, I can't disagree with Mrs. Jacobson. It would be nice to know, you know, because we want to be able to back up our promise and say, yes, we promised we would take care of this and here's a dollar amount we're willing to put toward it. But that said, I really do appreciate that we're taking this step back. Let's make this workable for this year and clean up.
So to that point, the district that is currently utilizing, in essence, a double accelerated pathway for elementary students shifted existing staff that we currently have from one role to another to be able to accomplish this. So that's why I'm intrigued by the fact that it's not going to add to the budget. They just changed their mindset about how they utilize certain staff and they found this more effective to serve a larger number of students in a more effective way than how those staff members were being utilized prior.
Mrs. Kelly?
I agree with actually both Ms. Maxine Cannelly and Ms. Guernsey that, you know, I appreciate the parental input, but at the risk of sounding very insensitive and I know, I don't need to explain to everybody how much this whole process has incensed me. I'm pretty sure when we spoke to these parents last year, we told them we did not have a plan for the following year. We did not have a plan. So it's not going to be ideal for everyone and at this point, I hate to say it, but buyer beware, you went into something that you had no idea was going to look like in year two. Okay? None of us at this table even had an idea of what that was going to look at. And guess what? Here we are, how many months later and we still don't have a clue? And we've got to put dollar amounts in here? We need to know what transportation's going to cost, if anything? We need to know if we need to hire extra people? We don't know anything. We did a disservice to these children and to these parents and I'm sorry, the fact that we are still having this conversation and we don't have any answers disgusts me.
Mrs. Maxine Cannelly?
I'm only going to say that, that we did not do a disservice to these children. I couldn't agree with you more, Mrs. Kelly, about not appreciating the path this whole thing has taken, the process of all of this. I, I don't want to get into any further. I think that's a little bit outside of the realm of what a board member should be saying, but I disagree fervently that we did a disservice to these children. These children are getting, received an amazing math experience this past summer and I am sure that we will come up with something while, if it doesn't make everyone happy, that's not my concern, but we will continue this path to this double acceleration that these children needed and that Fairfield Public Schools was not helping them meet in our current format. And again, I heard great experiences about what the children experienced last summer and they made a heck of a time commitment and stuck with it. So again, agree, Mrs. Kelly, with almost everything you said, but not the word disservice.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have item, anything else on supplies, texts or materials? Okay. Moving on to cap. Sorry. Oh, sorry. Mrs. Vitale?
The per pupil allocation for the schools, is that number, that, has that changed? How much we're allocating?
It's in here as a reduction.
Yes, the per pupil was reduced slightly. I believe it was 2% per pupil.
Okay. I thought it was. I just didn't remember what the number was.
We usually get a chart sometimes, but I, that can be a follow-up question in terms of like what, elementary, middle, high, and then by school, that kind of a thing, so.
Yeah, I feel like I can, Ms. Jacobson, I can add that to this document as a link because we do have that. So it's based on the number of pupils that goes down, but also the dollar amount, absolute dollar amount went down as well slightly.
Okay. Thank you. I forgot to ask it.
Okay. Capital, 93 to 98.
One quick follow-up for question B51, which was my asking about the data server and the additional costs. I just wonder if we could hear, if you know it, more about the subsequent year costs are in the $60,000 range and if we could hear what that is about, what that's for?
The maintenance is about $39,900 in the current quote. We're working with them to secure potentially better pricing, but in the budget, that's what it assumes. And then an additional 18,000, I believe, for software to allow us to configure the server to be able to utilize that data in layman's terms, because I don't totally understand that. Is Nancy here? Nancy, could you speak to that, come up and let us know a little bit more about that software?
Could I, I just cut in for one second. So in the answer, it says 39,000 and then 10,000 for the software, not 18,000? Or has it changed?
It actually should be, sorry, I was pushing the number instead of the button. It actually should be closer to 29,000. We did the calculation this afternoon. Are we still, as Courtney mentioned, we're still tweaking the numbers? That's the additional software to run the SQL server aspect of the software that allows the decision ed software to actually run. There's actually three servers involved. It may not be three physical servers, but three processes that are considered server processes, without getting too geeky about it.
We will need to update the note because we didn't have that information when we did the note about the server software component. The maintenance software is estimated to be about 39,900 annually.
Mrs. Gerber, sorry. She had a follow-up.
So, and that, that would be a yearly cost moving forward?
The approximately 40,000 is a yearly cost. On the SQL licenses, we're trying to determine whether it's more effective to use a subscription service or actually buy them as perpetual licenses. Microsoft is in the process of changing their licensing structure, so I can't be more explicit about it at this point. We based it on the last time we bought SQL licenses, which was in 2021, and used those numbers.
Okay. So, but that would basically be numbers that would be in the 24, 25?
Subsequent years, yes.
Okay.
And just to clarify, but this, so obviously it's, it's a substantial investment. It is an ongoing investment, but it is one that is going to make what better? Is it just accessing the data, processing the data? What actually does it, what's the bang for the buck here?
The system comes with 1,000 pre-created templates to produce data views, if you will, for the principals. So if they have a particular area of student achievement that they want to look at, there may be a template that fits that need immediately. And there's a website with a dashboard on it that allows them to pick their favorites and build that dashboard so they can keep seeing them as time progresses. And it basically gives it to them without having to go through our department and do analysis work that we do now to produce data visits, based on their experience with many districts across the country. And I'm sure Mr. Testan can add, add to it since he used the product previously in Bridgeport.
Again, it was a product that was utilized heavily when then Assistant Superintendent, now Secretary of Education Cardona was in Meriden. It's an extremely effective tool in providing data, not only to principals, district administrators, all the way down to teachers, depending on what rights are provided, so they can access data in real time and utilize that data to drive instruction, to drive SRBI, you know, however you want to build dashboards, chronic absenteeism, the overlap between absenteeism and achievement, staff abs, teacher absenteeism overlaid with, you know, student absenteeism and how that impacts achievement. I mean, there's, again, many, many different ways you can build dashboards that'll be utilized in real time at the building level and the district level so that we can have conversations around academic achievement and, and how best to serve and drive teaching and learning.
And so this is something that all program directors would have access to, training on, so that we're not looking to limit who has access to this. This would be data for everyone to be able to use to drive instruction.
Sure. And we can also provide dashboards that we can put on our website to provide to the public as well.
Okay. Because I'll, I'll put out there early, and sorry, I just have one more point, but that, you know, I expressed early on last week regarding adding a position to be in charge of this. I still strongly feel that way because I do believe that with everything, I, I'm not having a problem with the software, given what you just said and given the more simple, I'm sure you could describe it far more complexly than you did, but knowing everyone having access to it, it seems that the, the people who need the access, the program directors, the principals, the teachers, I'm not sold on adding another bureaucratic level of intervention with the data. I guess to me, it would be a nice to have, but I think this is something that needs to be put in the hands of the people who are going to be closest to students or one level above closest to students, and this is almost three levels above students, and I just, that's what I'm not seeing, but.
Clarify, are you talking about the software or the position or both?
I'm talking about the position.
The position?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I think everyone is pretty much in agreement and as we spoke more and more in detail about this, that to have someone from an educational perspective to be that conduit, to be able to go and provide sessions with, at PLCs, with faculty, to go over the data with, help interpret, you know, I mean, I find it to be a very useful position that we can offset somewhere, I think, as we move forward, but, you know, I, I think it's something that is very critical to the, to go hand in hand with, with the, with the software.
Following up on that, I think you requested a, or new organization chart. I think a redlined version almost of the organization chart is what we need to see because that might help see how this funnels.
Well, the job description that would.
Yes, we have the job description, but just.
Put on the.
I think we just need the organization chart redlined, how things are changing and that might possibly help. Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah. So I guess one question I have, just in terms of, you know, all the different staff who would be able to utilize this system, how much, what kind of training does that require? Like professional development, you know, is it pretty easy to pick up or is it fairly?
Yeah, it's pretty easy. I mean, the demonstration, you only will see or be able to access the, what you've been given. So a teacher will be able to access their class, students in their class, principals, obviously their school, district administration, the entire district. But yeah, it's, it's pretty straightforward.
And then I guess just another part of the question in this through the chair, and it probably would be to Mr. Testan, since because you haven't been in the district that long, but perhaps to one of or many of the people at this table, since you have been here longer, is just in terms of listening to Mr. Testan's description of what this system provides, is this the kind of thing that you or staff working with you have said in the past? We'd really like to get this kind of information, but it's really time consuming to access or we can't really access it? I mean, I know we get lots of data presentations, so obviously that's always been something that staff has been able to provide, but is this something that will make that easier, more user-friendly, more accessible, that type of, just better, I guess?
Before they answer, they were given a demonstration through the vendor.
So as a former principal, when we went through the demonstration, it, it was all the things that I would need as a building principal to look at in terms of identifying areas of growth, areas of strength, and really utilizing that information to make my school improvement plan a living document. And so we had a, a meeting with building principals, I believe it was either last week or the week before, and, and talked to them about this product and some of the things that, that they would like to have access to and it definitely. checked the majority, if not all of the boxes, in terms of the things that they would like to have immediate access to on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Guernsey?
Do you want to follow up to that?
Sure.
Can you explain how it would be different from what they're doing now in terms of accessing the data as compared to using this new product? I'm assuming they're getting this data now in some way, or not really? I mean, that would be good to know also.
I think the most impactful part was that it was all in one location in terms of the way it was set up is all the, I'm assuming their data visits were aligned along the perimeter of the page, so literally, it was just a click of a tab to change from looking at student absenteeism to student assessment, from student assessment to teacher absenteeism and trends. So I think it was more so the increased access and having, in terms of, I'll just say, increased access and availability.
I have another follow-up. Who's inputting the data?
I can answer that question. Basically, what we do is we take the various databases that we collect information on, the Student Information System, Infinite Campus, the Human Resource and Financial System, Special Ed Resources, whatever those databases are that we have, and we transfer data to this company, and they do what we call flattening the data, so it becomes accessible, and then it allows them, those templates that we talked about, in the background, background to crunch the data to present it. And to add to what Zakiya was saying, it's presented to the administrators in a more graphical format in this dashboard, as opposed to looking at a report list, which we present to them now in Infinite Campus, and selecting a report and hoping it's the report that they want it to be.
One last follow-up to that. Is that student level, or is it disaggregated?
No, it's, again, it's permission-based, but it's disaggregated down to the individual student all the way up, but it depends on who you are, what you get access to. So for example, if we published something to the website for the public dissemination, it obviously would not have any student identifiers in it.
Sorry, Mrs. Guernsey?
Thank you. So to your point, I understand the customizable version of this dashboard. That makes sense to me, and that there are these reports, like, kind of like you're describing, like a canned report, which sounds like they would be useful. And what I'm wondering, and Dr. Parrish a little bit hit on this, if there are other reports that were needed that needed to be built in whatever form, and I don't know what the, how these reports are built, is that something that your team would be capable of doing, or it is an additional expense through this company? How would that work? Because, I mean, it's nice to think that everything would be packaged perfectly, but I could imagine that we might want to tweak it at some point.
My understanding, and again, I've been through a couple of demos with the company, and we've done some, you know, due diligence, but my understanding is that there are some tools that my staff could use to create something that perhaps isn't part of the thousand things they already have created, and they also, for a price, would create a report for us if we needed something more sophisticated that we were unable to produce.
Thank you. Mrs. Maxine Cannelly?
Just to follow up on Ms. Jacob's point, I assume this also would include all the standardized tests, all of those data points, all those sub-scores also in here?
We hold all of that information in Infinite Campus, so yes, it would all be transported over, yeah.
Thank you.
I just had to, that when we spoke with the vendor, it's, the idea is that all the schools will be getting the same information, so that consistency is really important as, you know, for us at Central Office, for my colleagues, to be able to view assessment data, to view demographic data, to view student-level performance data, test score data, all in one place consistently across levels. Am I, is that accurate, James's characterization?
Okay, anyone else? Any last questions? Mr. Testan, anything, any requests for this week? The forums are on there, so if any follow-up questions that you have from this evening can be inputted on there, as well as the sections that we have upcoming for next Tuesday. If you haven't already put them in, to please have them, everything in by Sunday at 10:00 PM preferably, so that staff have time to get back to those questions. Any final items? No? Okay. Then I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Vitale, seconded by Mrs. Rotelli, all in favor. Motion passes. Mrs. Kelly, are you voting to adjourn? And Mr. Peterson, did you get your hand up? Yes, all of them unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Good night.